Welcome, everybody, to the Tuesday, June 22, 2021 Board of Selectmen meeting. All rise for the flag of allegiance.
I forgot to change the chair.
Okay, no public comment. Jason, could you make your watch?
Absolutely. I make a motion to approve payroll warrant, 2151, in the amount of $182,168.73.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? None. All in favor?
Aye.
Four, one absent.
I make a motion to approve bill warrant, 2151, in the amount of $339,334.84, which breaks down to the town of $117,662.67. Water and sewer, $12,557.50. Payroll withholding, $23,979.69. Light bills, $148,150.59. Chapter 90, $3,910. And grants, $33,074.39.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? None. All in favor?
Aye.
Four in favor, one absent. Approval of minutes. Approval of Board of Selectmen's minutes of May 18, 2021.
Motion to approve Board of Selectmen minutes from May 18, 2021.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Four in favor, one absent. Approval of Board of Selectmen's executive session minutes of April 26, 2021.
Motion to approve Board of Selectmen minutes, executive session minutes, of April 26, 2021.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? None. All in favor? Four in favor, one absent. Approval of Board of Selectmen minutes of June 7, 2021.
Motion to approve Board of Selectmen minutes meetings from June 7, 2021.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? None. All in favor?
Aye.
Four in favor, one absent.
Chairman Watson, if I may move to make a motion to move the presentation of the citation to A.W. Chesterton for community COVID vaccine clinic involvement up to the top of the rest of the agenda.
Somebody want to second that?
Second.
Any discussion? None. All right. We'll take a vote. All in favor of moving up the presentation citation to Chesterton?
Aye.
Four in favor, one absent. Bill?
Terrific. So we're welcoming here Ms. Maureen Crawford, hence, I believe, is the correct pronunciation, from A.W. Chesterton. And today, we brought them here so the town of Groveland could present them with this official citation. And it reads as follows. "The Board of Selectmen hereby extends its public recognition and appreciation to A.W. Chesterton. Be it resolved on this day, June 22, 2021, the Groveland Board of Selectmen would like to join with all residents of the town of Groveland in honoring A.W. Chesterton, to thank them for their efforts to provide access to vaccines in the fight against the COVID-19 pandemic. We recognize this, the significant amount of critical work, investment, and initiative that was taken to expedite this event. These contributions put us all closer to our shared goal to end this pandemic. We commend your commitment, your generosity, and your call to action. We understand that in unprecedented times such as these, the need to work together in an inclusive and incorporated partnership with all stakeholders to respond to this pandemic. We appreciate having A.W. Chesterton as an indispensable partner in the effort. On behalf of the citizens of Groveland, of the town of Groveland, we, the members of the Board of Selectmen, extend our sincerest gratitude." So if you'd come up and please accept this from the Board of Selectmen, as well as the town and citizens of Groveland.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Bill, do we have to sign that?
It's printed. We can sign it if you'd like.
Yeah, we should sign it.
Make it official.
Let's sign it.
Get a copy of that from the stars.
I think you did. Don't get too carried.
Well, and thank you for stepping up. Thank the company. They're always willing to help out. And it was a very nice gesture.
I think this came from this table. I think so. I think so.
Any comments?
Might I borrow a blue pen? Yeah, blue. Okay, I just want to sign this in. Wait, don't.
My only comment would be to extend my thanks. You know, it's like I said in my email to you that the worst in times typically brings out the best in people.
Just to do in blue.
And A.W. Chesterton, I think, stands as a testament to that tried and true human tradition that, you know, when things go bad, we band together and we pull together and get things done. And it's, I don't imagine there was an easy lift for anyone there. And to pull it off is really extraordinary feat, and we appreciate it. I understand you had, you vaccinated 14 folks?
14.
14.
And some of our neighbors, townspeople that we didn't even know. So that was exactly what we wanted to do.
Awesome. And all with the Johnson &amp; Johnson, one shot and done. Beautiful. Terrific.
Thank you so much.
And thank you for stepping up. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Okay, we'll revert to regular business. Appointment of Alex LaFlash of Georgetown to part-time seasonal groundskeeper for the Highway Department effective 6/21/21, for $14 an hour up to 19 hours per week.
Motion to appoint Alex LaFlash of Georgetown to the part-time seasonal groundskeeper for the Highway Department position effective June 21, 2021, for $14 an hour up to 19 hours per week.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? None. This came with the recommendation of the Highway Superintendent. No discussion. All in favor? The appointment? Four in favor, one absent. Next, Joe Demore, appointment to the Finance Board effective July 1, 2021.
Motion to appoint Mr. Joe Demore to the Finance Board effective July 1, 2021.
Second that.
Motion made and seconded. Joe, seeing as nobody knows you, why don't you introduce yourself? You're still a member of the town of Groveland?
Yes, longtime member of town of Groveland. 27 years. Glorious years.
27 years. You're just a newcomer.
I am, yeah. I think you need to get over 50 to become a townie. First of all, thank you. I want to thank Ruth Rebar, the Finance Chair, for nominating me and for, thank you, the Board of Selectmen, for considering me. However, it is my desire to serve on the Finance Committee, but I'm going to decline the nomination. And the reason for that is this. At our most recent meeting of the Government Study Committee, they provided consent for me to represent them on a search committee, should it be the pleasure of the Board to allow me to be on a search committee for the first town administrator. I think that's a really important job. I'd like to be a part of it, and I prefer to represent not myself as a private citizen, but as a member of the Government Study Committee. The second reason I wanted to decline at this time is the special acts draft was sent to you. It was actually drafted by one of our committee members, John Christopher, Attorney Christopher. The special acts draft, which coincides with Article IV from the town meeting, which was unanimously approved, allows us to create the necessary document that needs to go to Senator Tar's office and also Representative Mira's office, so that they can get involved with me in producing the legislation that ultimately will be passed by both chambers at the State House and ultimately signed into law by a governor.
Joe, can I just interrupt you with discussing your appointment?
Right.
And I think that's for some, that's for another discussion.
Understood. So I'm waiting for the Board of Selectmen to give an opportunity for us to move forward with that process. So that's the second reason why I am declining the appointment, is because I'm going to be involved in that project. Now, when the town administrator is appointed, then I'll seek the opportunity to serve on the Finance Committee. I don't have to wait for the special act project to be finished. So again, thank you. I wanted to clarify that. And I'll take any questions.
Okay, so basically, you're going to withdraw your, your...
Correct.
I make a motion to table.
Motion to table. Is there a second?
No second.
Seconded. All in favor of tabling? Unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a date? Does it need tabletill?
No.
No? Okay.
Just get, just get.
Okay, we have a lot of appointments tonight.
Will you accept, if I read the whole list, would that be an okay motion for everybody?
Well, we're not. That will come up, that will come up a little bit later. We have the appointment. These are recommended by the building inspector, Sam Josselin. For us, the appointment of Richard Danforth from the alternate inspector to the Groveland Plumbing and Gas Inspector effective July 1, 2021.
Motion to approve?
Excuse me?
Are you waiting for a motion? Are we going to do them on?
No, we need a, we need a, we'll need a motion.
Oh, one at a time. Okay, so a motion to appoint Richard Danforth from alternate inspector to the Groveland Plumbing and Gas Inspector effective...
Is there a second on that?
7/1, 2021.
Second.
Second, motion made and seconded to appoint Ricky Danforth to Plumbing and Gas Inspector effective July 1, 2021. All in favor? Oh, discussion? None? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Five to zero.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the next three appointments based on Sam Josselin's recommendations.
Second.
Sounds reasonable. Appointment of Bobby Baldini as the alternate Plumbing and Gas Inspector. Appointment of Jerry Downs as the second alternate Plumbing and Gas Inspector. Appointment of Kevin Waddington as the alternate Electrical Inspector, all effective July 1, 2021. All the recommendation of the building inspector. Motion on the floor, is there a second?
I did, I seconded it.
Seconded. Any discussion? None. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Five to zero. Appointment of summer program employees. We have a list. If we could just, when a motion is made, could it be made pending successful query checks?
I'll make a motion to approve the town of Groveland Summer 2021 Program employees as listed tonight on this sheet, subject to a query check.
How about reading the list?
Sure. Cameron Panero of 128 Maple Avenue, Atkinson. William Ruchello of 16 Union Street, Groveland. Matthew Kastengway of East Hampstead, New Hampshire. Sophia Hurd of 204 Center Street, Groveland. Mark Gen of 27 Bowden Drive, Haverhill. Ryan Piffling of 7 Hillview Drive, Groveland. Jana McCoy of 13 Seven Star Road, Groveland. Michael Cho of 107 Center Street, Groveland. Elisa Zambella of 24 Dwinell Street, Groveland. Emma Wilson of 7 Byfield Road, Groveland. Alex Berkeley of 10 Blueberry Hill Road, Groveland. Madison Lacerre of 1067 Main Street, Haverhill. Natalie Harriman of 197R King Street, Groveland. Atlyn Paquette of 96 King Street, Groveland. Jared Beliveau of 48 Center Street, Groveland. And Sydney Walback of 702 Salem Street, Groveland.
Motion made and seconded by Jason. Any further discussion? Bill?
Yeah, you're making this contingent upon a successful query.
Yes.
The problem I see with that may be someone's telling us now that the queries are taking much longer than typical, up to six weeks. Summer program starts in a couple. That's going to run into some timing issues. How do we avoid that so that they can start on time?
Well, we could, we could vote to hire them, and if they, when the query check comes in, if they don't pass the query check, then they're, they're done.
I think that goes without saying, yeah.
What other choice do we have? I mean, I think we got to go with that. And if the query comes back, then either we look at it and vote on it, or what's the reason? Are any of these people minors, high school kids?
No, they're all, I think they're all young kids.
Yes, I recognize.
A lot of them are high school kids.
I recognize some of the names.
Or maybe first-year college students.
Right.
How's the query work on a minor? Isn't that protected? Those records are sealed?
I think in order to, they have to be, all these, they're all 18.
They're all 18.
They're all 18. They have to be.
All right, now that's a moot point.
Right. The senior, yeah. Ryan's.
I think we try to fast-track the query and wait and see, but like you said, I mean, if you don't start on time, what happens? Can we wait for the query?
If you don't start on time, you've got a lot of parents that have to scramble at the last second now to find daycare so they can get to work. And that becomes a tremendous inconvenience for maybe 100 families.
So you're looking for a friendly amendment that we vote to hire this list with the understanding that a query check will be done and they will sign off on that, that they have to agree to a query check?
Yeah, I mean, I just want to make sure, considering the, you know, extraordinary times these things are taking to get back, we shouldn't, we shouldn't inconvenience 100 or so families, because our government is slow right now to reacting.
I'd want to see what came up on a query, though.
Absolutely.
They stole a stick of gum for five years at the...
That's not going to, that probably not going to come up on a query. If you've ever been, if you've ever been queried.
I'll be facetious, but you know, who knows what's going to be on there, as relevant or irrelevant.
Have you submitted those yet?
They've been submitted, yeah.
How long ago?
This morning.
Hmm?
This morning.
Oh, this morning.
Yeah. I think Michelle just collected them last Thursday or Friday.
Okay.
So Matt has just, and actually, all of them aren't even complete. We've had to chase a lot of the kids to get even more information, so.
Now, were they aware prior to today that it's been taking a longer time than normal?
I only looked out today how long it was taking, because I had submitted some to the library, and the library just finally came back. So sometimes they come back in two days. But the last one I put in, it took six weeks.
You wanted to, you know...
We made the motion. Amendmented it. Should we vote?
Yeah, we haven't, do we have a second on that?
Yeah, I think Jason seconded it.
Second? No, on the amendment. Do it.
Yeah, I seconded it.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Discussion of the pines and the wells at the pines. Dan, you asked to bring this forward.
Yeah, I just, I wasn't on the board when the Board discussed fees for the pines. I just tried to come up to speed myself, and I think there's some issue with the well and watering or something, I heard, so I want to get some information and see what we can do to make changes if necessary, if not, maintain the status quo, so.
Let's see.
Can the Board, you know?
We had the Highway Superintendent who had the information on the wells, is he on, Catherine?
Not on yet. I'm just texting him now, looking for him.
Okay. Just to give him a minute. You had, also had a question about the fees?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know what it's being used for, and is there a schedule, or how to, you know, people in town make use of the pines? And Bill knows the most about that, or Jason, or if you can help me out without having to watch all the old footage.
So you don't want to do the work? I got to do the work for you?
I want a snippet in like two minutes or less, so I don't have to like go through all the YouTube videos. Yeah, I'd appreciate the courtesy. I would extend the same to you, Bill, and I'll lay that out there, and I'll owe you, owe you two minutes. How's that?
All right, I'll mark that down.
As a political courtesy, all right, or whatever you want to call it, professional courtesy.
Okay.
Bring me up to speed. No disrespect at all, it's just, what transpired, should we bring about any changes, or does the Board think it's working effectively?
As far as permits for folks that live in this town, there are no permits required. There's an understanding that if you're down there with a group, if I'm down there with my boys, playing on the ball field, and two teams show up to play a game, I'm not going to be, you know what?
You get balled.
I'm going to leave the field and leave, and give up the field to the teams that had a scheduled game.
Yeah. Is there any calendar? Do people go on to see what's occupied? Is there any way, somebody, if they want to get down there and play a pickup game, for instance, a baseball, they could look on the calendar and say, no, Babe Ruth's got it?
Right now, there is no, nothing on the town website. The schedules are located on multiple websites.
Yeah.
Mostly, well, predominantly on the ITBL Bay Ruth League website and the high school schedule. The high school would have a...
So you'd have to look at all of those. I mean, so we don't have like a pines director or a recreation director?
No, it would be...
Point guard or liaison on the pines?
It would be nice if we did, but we don't. You know, I'm the closest, I guess, to that liaison to kind of coordinate so nobody's tripping over each other.
Yeah, is there a need for that? Maybe the Board should talk about that. I mean, I think if there's, you know, it seems like it's fragmented, and...
It's very fragmented at the pines, because you also have, you know, girl softball, which encompasses not only youth softball, but high school softball. You have lacrosse that was using it earlier this year, because the pipe staves, you know, with a little drizzle, it's unplayable. The Pennske youth football typically use the utility field down in back as well during the fall. So, yeah, it's, it's unique in the fact that it's not like Washington Park, which is predominantly Groveland Baseball League, Little League, or Shanahan Field, which is predominantly Groveland Youth Soccer. This one has a multitude of uses and used by a number of people, as well as the boaters. You've got the children with the playground. We did, last year, I noticed them trying to find ways, resources that we can exploit in this town. One of them, and one of the best resources we have to exploit in this town is the pines. So through, you know, discussions here with the Board, we decided to throw out a trial balloon and see if we could get some AAU teams that are typically great with brick and mortar, but don't have fields, to rent our fields for a fee. Did some research, Jason helped me out, to find out what other towns around were charging, and if they were charging. And we came up with the $25 fee per event. An event we described or defined as a game, a practice, equals an event. If you have a doubleheader, that's two events, it would be $50, $25 per event.
It's like a couple hours, usually.
Couple of hours, typically. We didn't know where it would go. We didn't want to price ourselves out of the ball field. So basically, we just threw up a number as a trial balloon to see where it goes.
Is that still in progress, or?
That's still in progress. We've rented it twice to the AAU team known as The Show, which is out of Salem, New Hampshire. Their coaches are the high school coaches, JV and varsity. They work dual roles. They've also approached us, approached me about holding a camp on August 3rd, 4th, and 5th. It's a three-day camp. But the fee structure would be different. They would, it's only open to six to 12-year-olds, number one. Not open to the older children. And you've got to understand, they probably have a couple of ulterior motives. One is, they run an organization that's looking for ballplayers that charges a fee. So they're probably looking, they're looking for that age group. Their second motive, I would assume, is the earlier they can get these kids to play their way, the easier it is to coach them when they get to the high school level, where they are the coaches now.
Sure. Continuity.
Exactly. You know, the sooner you start attending to the seed and the soil, the better the crops you're going to get at the end, right? So they've approached me about possibly renting that field for three days, nine to one, those three days. We don't know how many Groveland children will be involved. One option was to give the Groveland children a 50% discount. But we don't know how many children are going to be involved, so it really doesn't make sense to explore that option. The other option is, they would split their fee with us. So for example, if they charge $100 per person, they would split it 55, 45 with us. We'd get $45 for every child that registered, which would go right into the Groveland Pines Revolving Fund to hopefully, you know, make it a more self-sustaining kind of deal down there.
Would that come before the Board for a review?
I don't do anything uro-laterally. I would always bring it up before the Board, absolutely.
Right.
So, you know, I'm bringing it up now.
So if that hasn't come before, I mean, they have to wait for the next meeting.
Yeah, but they're looking at August, the beginning of August. We have, we have many meetings.
It's on July.
Couple of meetings before then.
Gotcha.
So that brings you up to speed. But as far as residents, I've had this discussion with Denise before. I pay enough taxes that if I want to go down there and there's nobody using that field, and I want to go down there and play ball with my kid, I don't want to have to pull out a stinking permit to play ball with my kid at a park that my taxes support. But I'm always with the understanding that if the high school shows up, two teams show up, you yield the field, you don't be, you know, an idiot about it, and you just find another place to play or come back another time. The cage is always open. It's never locked, so you can always go in the cage and do some hitting.
Yeah. But that raises a good point. I mean, you know, I'm against, you know, nickel and dime and the taxpayers, who you pay?
Pay enough.
Seven, eight, nine, 10,000 in real estate tax, whatever you pay, and then, you know, 25 here and there. But what about non-residents? I mean, is that looked at, a non-resident? I mean...
Non-residents, we decided...
I mean, how would you categorize this, say, AAU team? I mean, if they're...
This is how we decided. Looking at some of the other towns, they have stipulations, minimum quantities. So we decided, the Board, that if the roster is made up of 55% or more Pennske children, there is, we waive the fee. Because at that point, we're taxing the taxed.
I understand.
We don't want to do that. If the roster is less than 55% Pennske children, then in that case, you know what? It's probably the majority of outsiders that are wanting to use our facilities. In that case, I don't feel so bad about taxing...
And we'd negotiate that, the Board. It would come before us? Is that how it works?
Right now, we're charging a $25 flat fee. Next year, you know, when spring comes around, depending on how successful we are, I imagine we can revisit that item and see if we can do better or expand on those revenue streams, see what we can do. That bring you up to speed?
Yeah, but if, like, for instance, the AAU team, would they just look at it, like, you know, if they're playing 10 games, it, you know, it's math. I mean, 25 times 10 is 250 bucks. I like your other idea, is if, just split. Usually, they charge, you know, hundreds of dollars for AAU, 500, 600, 700?
Well, yeah, okay.
Right? So, yeah.
But, but you, while your idea is good, your theory's kind of out there. Because the AAU, say they charge $12,000, to make it simple. It's $1,000 a month, because they go 12 months a year. They're only be looking to use the ball field 10 times out of 12 months, typically between May, June, July, and August. So to say, listen, you made, you know...
So you'd have to allocate it.
Yeah, I mean, make the math even simpler, they charge $10,000 per person, I don't think they're going to give us 4,500 per participant to use the park for 10 days.
Yeah, but if it was just a summer program?
The summer program is different because it's a three-day event, nine to one. We don't know how many kids from Groveland will be interested or register. We don't know how many kids from Pennske will be interested or register. But I believe they'll have their own pool of people, participants from their program up in Salem, New Hampshire at The Show, that will, the town will still make out.
And if someone's interested in using the field, it's safe to say they can call you?
You know...
You're the unofficial...
Yeah, I don't want to be the, I don't want to be the pine czar, but, you know, if somebody wants to know if they can use it, I'll have a pretty good idea.
You have an interest in it.
I'll have a pretty good idea, because I stay in touch with the Bayou teams, I stay in touch, my kid plays, I know the kids below him that play, I still go down there and watch the games, because I know the kids I've coached in the past. So I have a pretty good pulse on who's using it and when down there, pretty much.
Okay, thank you.
You're very welcome, sir.
Thank you. I don't know if anyone else, you know, thinks we should change the fee structure at all? I mean, 25, I think, is a little cheap for a non-resident, you know? I think it ought to be more, but that's my sentiment and the board wants to see, see how it goes.
I think, I think most, the biggest thing is we need to see how it goes. I mean, this is a slightly shorter season.
It's too soon.
Atypical, and it's, yeah, it's far too soon. I mean, at the very least, you wouldn't want to do that until after the season was finished. I would even propose that we continue through the next season, so we have two full seasons of time for it to ramp up and actually get a little recognition before we start restructuring everything.
And Jason's point, he makes a good point. The first, up until just a couple of weeks ago, COVID had many restrictions on what we could and couldn't do. So I don't think you're looking at, I don't think you're looking at an atypical year, is what I'm saying, or season, right now. Next year, all things being equal, we stay where we are or continue this positive trend, I think you'll see a much different result, there'll be more interest.
What's the problem with posting on the bathroom door or on the building itself a weekly schedule of who's using the field so that if Dan goes down with his kids, or Bill goes down with his kids, and a couple of teams show up and they want to use the field, and they say, well, hey, you're not on the list. You don't have the field usage today. That seems like a logical thing, they shouldn't have to go look on the town website. They should be able to look on the board down there, on the door, to see if somebody's scheduled for the week. And then, you could, somebody could go down there on a Monday morning and look and say, okay, the fields are open on Thursday night, so I can come down here with my kids on that particular night.
What would it take to coordinate all the schedules? You mentioned several websites, you know? I mean, is there a way to kind of merge all of those into one, you know, and share everyone?
You probably could.
Mr. Chairman.
But if, honestly, if there had been a problem?
20 minutes.
I would have known about it more than once in the last five years, and nobody, but nobody, has communicated to me that, jeez, I went down to my kid to play some ball, and all of a sudden, these kids showed up for a practice and kicked me off the field. It's...
Catherine, you had something?
Catherine?
Go ahead, no, no.
If the board wants it done.
What's that again?
I can coordinate that if the board wants it done and change the schedule every week down there.
Corona Board, we have that on our agenda later, the duties.
Yeah, we can take that up under Administrative Coordinated Duties, which, coming up. Kathy, you have something?
Yes, I do. Two things, one is, it sounds like you're really interested in this, so I would suggest you, while we do this trial year, you go and do some research, see what other towns are doing, because it takes all of us doing research and bringing it back to the board to get anything done. And the second and most important thing right now is, we are working with very short staffing, and I do not think this is the time to try to introduce yet another task until we get our priority tasks accomplished with the town finances and with the hiring of a treasurer and a town administrator. I think we have to prioritize what we can get done and get it done, because that's been the problem this past interim period, we have not gotten things done.
Can I respond? I mean, I...
Sure.
I could do a lot, Kathy.
Right.
You know, you know, to Bill's point, you know, yeah, I don't hear about people getting kicked off fields, I mean, me neither. But I have a son, he plays baseball, and I've said to him, you know, from time to time, I'd say, you and your friends get down to the pines and play baseball, and it's, they don't even bother try it because the field's occupied. So I just think it's a, it's a minor thing, and it's, to me, it's kind of common sense that if you had a, you know, a schedule, people could just look at it. My son wouldn't even have to think about it, it's just like, oh, you know, I could look at the board myself and determine whether or not he can call up his friends and go play baseball down the pines. So I just think it's a public notice issue. I don't think it's, you know, a full-time job for me, and I've only been on the board for a little over a month now, so...
What am I saying?
I'm on task for, you know, cleaning up the finances, knowing what we got to do here. So, you know...
All I'm asking...
I work seven days a week, pretty much.
I work too.
Stuck in traffic and pebbity, and I just, you know, anybody who watches traffic, go take a trip down to Peabody and sit on Summit Street, you know, at 5 o'clock. So you're doing the right thing, say, if you want to increase traffic, but, you know, so, you know, I'll do whatever I got to take, but this is just a little thing, and...
Right, so I...
And I'd appreciate you, you know, I know what the priorities are, and I could do the other things too. I can walk and chew gum at the same time, Kathy. I can.
Tonight, we've been 20 minutes on this, and tonight...
I'll go to 10 o'clock, I'll go to 3:00 in the morning. I will do a marathon here for the town of Groveland, I will, I will.
But we did not, we neglected...
I asked for the pines to be on the agenda, with all due respect, and if the board doesn't want to continue further on, but please don't tell me what the priorities are. Please.
Bill?
Condescending.
I'm not being condescending.
It is.
You are being condescending to me, thank you, sir.
All right.
Dan, if I could just respond to that. If you've been down there, the pines is a pretty big place.
Yeah.
And when I was a kid, if the ball field was taken and I had a place as big as the pines, Joey's glove was home plate, Petey's glove was first base, Ramon's was second base, and so on and so forth, and we made our own field, and there's plenty of room, and my kid has done it too. He's called up his friend Stevie, Nikki, Austin, and they've gone down there and said, oh, the field is being used, we'll go down there in the utility field and make our own field and play ball. So nothing, nothing should stop anybody from going down there and playing ball with the amount of land that's available for use, even though it's not a specifically designed baseball field. I don't know, that's just, if my kid gave me that excuse that I'm not going down there to play ball because somebody's there, I'd tell him, it's a lame excuse, you've got plenty of room, go play ball.
Mr. Jeff, I can respond. We have somebody that said they could coordinate the schedule, so I'd like to take her up on that. So we, you know, it's not an issue if someone's willing to do it. So if they're willing to do it, why don't we just get it done and not bicker about it?
Well, let's bring that up under, we got the discussion on the Administrative Coordinated Duties here, we can, we'll bring that up at that time.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, great. Rennie, the Highway Superintendent is on, in reference to the, to the wells. Rennie, can you hear us? Rennie, can you hear us? We can't hear you very good.
Try again. Okay, Rennie?
I'm here.
Okay. Can you give us an update on the wells? And some of the problems with them?
The manager, there's two wells, obviously, down at the pines. There's the one well that has a six-inch pump in it that does all of the irrigation for town hall, as well as the city building, and most of the heat fields at the pines less than two.
Rennie, could you speak up a little bit?
That well is in need of reconditioning. It, the pump, from what I heard from Reliable...
You're not seeing the screen?
...is stuck in the well. So in order to improve upon, we have to get the pump out. And then, most likely, because the, because that well collapsed in on the, on the pump, that well will have to be redrilled. So they'll send their, they'll send, they'll send the drill tools down and clean out the well, so that we can get a lot more volume out of it and a lot cleaner water presence will be.
Rennie, do you, do you have a cost on any of that?
An estimation and no hard numbers, was somewhere in around $20,000 to $25,000 would be a ballpark. It would probably, they said it wouldn't be worth spending more than that, so if, if, you know, if that's a number that's working for the town, you know, anywhere from 20,000 to 25,000, to pull the pump out, to clean the well out, so they have to put, like I said, they have to put their drill tool back down the hole, clean it out, and then reset the, reset the pump, after they do a, an extensive flow test, which that's probably, I would say, a significant part of the, of the prices, because they want to make sure that the, that the well is adequate for what we need.
So, so basically, the recovery of the well, when they stop pumping out of it, it's not recovering fast enough?
It's not recovering fast enough, and it's basically because the well collapsed in on itself. So there is a risk if we try and get the pump out and the development rig that they put on it breaks, breaks the pump, then the well will have to be abandoned.
They have to, will have to be abandoned, did you say?
Yeah, because basically what happens is when they break free, it'll either break free before the pump or after the drafting line, and then they won't be able to retrieve that, and the well will basically be useless. So there is a risk to improving on the well. But I think, you know, in talking to Tom from Reliable, I think if we continue down the road, eventually the well's going to be pretty much useless anyways.
Is there a chance that that could...
I know we had, you know, somewhat of a decent drought, and, you know, there was no way that that well could keep up with the irrigation that it needed.
So if, if we have a, if we have a drought of some sort, those fields might turn brown down there?
Oh, yeah, they most definitely will. And even with the irrigation, even with the irrigation at 100%, like I was telling Selectman O'Neal, irrigation is a supplement to Mother Nature, it does not replace her. So if you have drought conditions, you're most likely going to have brown grass anyways. But if our irrigation can't keep the grass alive, the fields will completely, you know, they'll be obliterated to a dust field. So that's, that's why you have irrigation, so that you stay away from that happening, obviously.
Rennie, do you have some time to take questions?
What's that?
Do you have time to take questions?
Sure.
Anybody got questions for Kathy, go ahead, for the Highway Superintendent?
Well, yes, and that's, I'm wondering why the Highway Superintendent is here talking about the wells, and the Water and Sewer Superintendent isn't here to talk about the well. I'm kind of, I'm wondering why the Water and Sewer Superintendent wasn't brought in if we had a concern about the well.
That's got nothing to do with the, our water system, this has to do with the wells that are there for the purpose of irrigating the field.
Okay, but who, who maintains these wells then? The Highway Department or the Water and Sewer Department?
Water and Sewer have nothing to do with it.
They don't maintain these wells.
No, they don't. Rennie, you, you and your crew have been doing most of the work down there?
Absolutely.
I'd like to reach out to the Water and Sewer Superintendent before we go further and just find out these wells. My understanding was Water and Sewer managed all the wells in town, so I'd just like to get that clarified.
Catherine, could, maybe you could get Highway, I mean, Water on there, anybody else got any questions?
He said he's not going to be available tonight because he didn't have, we didn't have our contract on here.
Dan, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, we'll ask you, I mean, do you maintain the wells down there?
Yes, I, I've been, since I took this job, I've been in charge of winterizing them, starting them up in the spring. You know, Mark Prento's been really good with fixing the irrigation and getting that online, you know, basically everywhere in the town.
What has the, what has the role of the Water Department been at all?
It hasn't been since I've taken this position, no, not at all, Dan.
In how many years? I'm sorry?
Two, two years and some change now.
Okay. So was it delegated, or it's just, it's always been that as far, way, as far as you know?
I believe Bob Arakalian took care of it when he was here, and it just, like I said, it was just part of my daily activities when I, when I took the position.
And it never fell under the jurisdiction of the Water Department?
Can I ask you a question? I mean, I mean, if I cut my grass too short, which I don't, you know, it dies, turns yellow. So I mean, does it have, the amount of water and the frequency of irrigating those fields, does that have any effect on the frequency of the grass cuts and the...
Yes, absolutely.
Maintenance of the fields?
Obviously, the more you irrigate your lawn, the faster it grows and the more you'll have to cut it. Water and sun obviously control the growth rate. If you continuously water the grass, it will grow faster. So there's certainly a happy medium on, you know, keeping it lush and looking good without having to mow it, you know, two, three times a week.
Do you have any recommendations for us in terms of that, or what needs to be done, or what needs to change?
So, talking, and I've talked to Tom from Reliable, he's, he's basically, he has all the knowledge on this, this is all his knowledge, it's not mine, but I do have well experience. I drilled for about three years before I got into municipality. But anyways, in talking to him, the other four-inch well that we have over by the, by the shed in the utility field, that well can also be improved upon significantly. You know, pulling that pump and, and what they call aqua-fracking it, they basically clean the well out. He said that he, he would be very surprised if we couldn't get two to three-fold the volume out of that well, if, if it could be possibly aqua-fracked. That would be another one, the expense would be, you know, in around $20,000 to do it. But that would potentially eliminate, if the dog park goes in and all that, the water features that we were looking to do, potentially, could be, that well could be used for that. If, if it was approved upon, if we got the flow test back correctly, it's a, it's a possibility.
So did I, I mean, I kind of faint on the audio, so we need, what are you saying, $20,000 to drill that out? Is that what you said?
Yeah, so that one, they would pull the pump out of that one, they do what they call fracking, they clean the well out, basically by pumping water down into it, it cleans out the, the cracks and the, and the breakages in the well, and it basically allows for more water to infiltrate the well and makes it more productive.
So is, is there money in the budget for that, or would have to, that would be a potential warrant article for the next budget?
I, I believe that you would use CPC money, I know there's a revolving account that is down there for the pines as well. I'm, I'm sure there's several avenues that can...
So it could be done this, this coming fiscal year? Without further approval?
What's that? The Pines revolving account, it's a revolving account that is down there for the pines, so it's there.
Can we turn the volume up on him a little?
Billy here.
He just said the Pines revolving account is down there. This was not on the warrant, so you can't use CPC on it this year.
Bill, you have a question?
Yeah, so, Rennie, there's, there's two wells down there, neither of them are potable water, right?
Correct.
And the newest well was dug specifically for the utility fields and things like that, and that's what the shed is back there for, it holds some...
Correct.
Reservoirs, right?
Yes.
So it's the older well that is not potable water, but it's all, it's used specifically for irrigation on Town Hall and the old fields down the pines?
Yes.
And that's, that's basically why the Water Department doesn't run them, you've always ran them.
Correct, it's not drinking water.
Right, and, so what you're saying is either way, whether the estimate on the old well for $20,000 to $25,000, or fracking the new well for approximately the same amount of money, it looks like we're in it for $20,000 to $25,000, no matter which option you pick?
Correct.
I know there's some money left over, but, boy, that's gonna, that's gonna put it, a dent in it.
Who's on?
Oh, is there?
All right.
Colin's on it?
Colin's on.
It's small font.
Colin.
I think it's just this...
Colin, you there?
Just waiting for him to unmute.
Now, Rennie, while he's waiting for him to unmute, Colin was talking about digging another well down at the Pines, somewhere located near the cell tower for potable water, right? Because that's why they didn't want the dog park to go down there?
Well, field, that has nothing to do, obviously, with the Highway Department.
Right, but is that something that could be piggybacked?
That would not, I, that's not something I can talk about, because that would be under Colin, Colin runs the, the water field, he knows what, you know, what can be done down there or not be done, um, I wouldn't speak on that.
Uh, Rennie, Rennie, can you just hold on, see if we can hear from, uh, Colin?
Yeah, um, I'm right here, I don't know if you guys can hear me or not.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, great.
Excellent, thank you for, uh, calling in.
So can I ask Colin a quick question?
Sure, go ahead.
So Colin, the, the issue is, we've got two, two wells down at the Pines, one is in good shape, one is really in bad shape. My understanding is that you were looking to drill another well down near the cell tower at the Pines for potable water, is that, is that still like on the radar?
Uh, we tried that, uh, looking for better, um, better quality water, you know, with less minerals and stuff in it, which is what we fight here in town, um, we drilled three test wells, and we actually found more or higher levels of the minerals that we were trying to get away from, um, so we've kind of scrapped that idea, down there at least.
All right, so that kills my idea of piggybacking two projects in one, then, if you can't use it for potable water, then you're gonna abandon that altogether, so. All right, thank you, that's all my questions.
Uh, any questions for Colin? Colin, you have nothing to do with those, uh, two wells that, uh, are there for the irrigation?
No, we didn't have anything to do with that, um, one, the original one was here when I got here, uh, the second one, or the newest one, got drilled a couple of years ago when Denise was here, uh, that's the one with the little shed next to it, down by the dog park, um, I know they had problems with silt in the first original well, uh, and I don't think the second one was ever really much good, as far as I know.
Thank you. Uh, any other questions for Colin? Dan?
Just if, uh, Rennie, if you could keep us, uh, posted on, um, you know, what transpires down there, whether or not you drill that other well, or, you know, coordinating with the Water Department, or what we need to do next, can you just keep us informed and in the loop?
Yep.
Rennie, did you, could you pick that up?
What's that?
Ask that, ask that you just keep us in the loop, please?
Sure, absolutely, um, you know, I, I reached out to Reliable Pump, they're the ones that installed the pump, um, they also work with the drill rigger, uh, with the, with the, um, with the driller that drilled those holes, so they, he has, you know, a lot of information on the wells, um, you know, he, he certainly said that, that more viable well, the first well, would be worth, um, you know, exploring to get more volume out of it, um, he did, I do think that, that the second well that was drilled, personally was drilled in the wrong area, um, but it, it still is viable and, and could, you know, could be, could produce a lot more if we needed it to. So I'll definitely keep you up, up to speed as things transpire, if they start to fail more, or anything comes up, I'll definitely, obviously, keep you on the loop.
You can let us know if you need an agenda item for, uh, or anything down there?
Absolutely.
Uh, any other questions for Rennie?
Just, thank you.
Kathy?
No, I'm also, thank you.
Bill?
Good.
Jason?
I'm good, thank you.
Thank you for chiming in, Rennie.
Not a problem, have a good night.
Thanks.
Okay, uh, that should take care of the Pines and the wells. Um, next discussion on back tax collection. Dan, this is something you requested?
Yes, there, um, we've had several discussions on it, um, uh, we had the, um, consultant here last time, so are we, as a board, gonna pursue that, or are we gonna wait to hire somebody, so what are we gonna do? Right now, I think it's in limbo, and there's a timeline on it, time is of the essence, there's only so much time, you can let transpire, um, so are we gonna pursue the back taxes with vigor, or, or not?
Kathy?
So, when we met with Sarah, and you were here, right, um, she did say that we have two years to put the properties into tax title, that the demand notices are going out as they do, should go, um, and we spoke at length about the Valley Screw property and the difficulties with that, which comprises a large majority of the, um, tax title list right now, but all of the properties in the tax title list, um, cannot be sold without the taxes being paid, so we're not in limbo, we're taking all of the actions that we're supposed to take, that we are legally bound to take, and Rebecca is also looking, our town planner, Economic Planning and Depart, and Planning Department, is carefully doing the kind of work that Sarah spoke about us having to hire a consultant to do, about looking at each parcel, about where it is, and, and doing that type of research, so we have the in-house talent, so we don't need to go hire another consultant. I think we're doing very well with this.
Dan?
Well, whether or not they go to tax-taking now, or somewhere within the two-year period is the issue, and that's what I mean by, you know, are we acting quickly, so I'd like to give, uh, uh, her permission to, uh, go to tax-taking, so sooner than later, you know, it puts, it puts the pressure on, uh, the taxpayers to, uh, get caught up, or at least, uh, make the phone call and, or come down to Town Hall and, uh, you know, get squared up, so I believe in, uh, leaning on people a little bit.
Right, and she's sending the demand notices...
That's what I meant by limbo, we have two years on some of them, and some we don't, but why wait? Wait is for buses.
No, we have two years to put them in a tax title, I think you misunderstood, and then after that, they can't legally sell the property without paying the taxes and interest, so I guess, um, Sarah can come back another time and give us an update on this year, how did we do with outstanding taxes, is that what you're looking for?
I'm asking this board whether or not we're tying her hands behind her back on whether or not she can go to tax-taking, so if we just give her, uh, uh, ample leeway to do what she thinks is best in, uh, her judgment, to collect the taxes for the town, and I don't want her in any way hinder her, uh, collection effort, so I, uh, as a board member here, want her to, um, have that discretion to go collect the taxes, uh, and use all, uh, legal methods to do so, with a...
Correct.
Without waiting.
Well, she's doing that, I, I don't, I guess I don't know what the question is, so maybe we need to have her back again as a future day.
Well, I, I would like to see, at least, uh, we know from history that once you start sending the letters out to these people, that, uh, we start collecting money, and, uh, we need to start somewhere, and I think she had recommended that that be, uh, where we go, I think she was bra, raising, looking for our blessing on, on, uh, proceeding with it. Uh, Bill, you had something?
Uh, Jason was first.
Oh, Jason, go ahead.
Yeah, and I believe we gave her that blessing, she's, it's, she's in process of do, of doing all that, sending the demand letters that you're speaking of right now, so it's all in the works, I mean, it takes a tremendous amount of time to put all this through, and we're not doing anything to hinder her from getting it done, and we made that, I thought, pretty clear at the meeting that she attended, that she's moving forward and doing what she needs to do to get everything taken care of.
Well, we'll make sure that she knows that. Thank you, Bill, go.
My only comment would be that if we had a full-time employee in place, as opposed to someone that was charging us by the hour, I would feel more comfortable, but you can easily get sidetracked and rack up huge hourly bills with some of these tax titles you're talking about, and I would caution against giving someone a blank check to go after things that, um, you know, when all is said and done, might cost us more than we'll actually get back.
Dan?
I, I think last time Kathy, you questioned her on whether or not she could work within the confines of our budget?
Yes.
There's a certain...
Yes.
Amount of money?
Yes, and the, the second thing I just got to offer up, I believe that, um, our administrative coordinator said we have resumes in there for the treasurer position, and I'll volunteer my free time to come down here and meet with any other, like, one other member of the board, and go through them, and let's start getting these interviews going. If we've got some good candidates for treasurer, that would, that would go a long ways to getting this sped up, which is what you're looking for.
That's what I'm looking for.
Well, yeah, so we need to fill that position, so if the board's willing right now, um, would someone else like to help me with that task? I'd like to have, like, one other...
I'll look at resumes, I'll...
Okay, is that okay with everybody else, if the two of us meet and just go through the resumes and see what looks good?
Yeah.
It's okay?
Fine with Bill, you got a problem with that?
Okay?
No, it's fine with me, I mean...
Okay with me, all right, so we'll work out a time and...
Kind of fortunate to have, uh, somebody of Dan's talent, a CPA, attorney, that can do that. Okay, I think we're all set on that.
Great.
Uh, discussion on administrative coordinator duties. Uh, we all got the letter, or, uh, the, listing the, uh, the, the duties of the administrative coordinator, uh, and it just seems to keep expanding, seems like we, we're throwing everything at, uh, at Catherine, uh, and she's requesting, uh, she ended up getting the, the additional hours, uh, but that's still, it's still not enough time, twenty-four hours a week, this is basically, uh, it's basically a full-time job, um, any, uh, any comments? Anybody got any comments?
Yes, I, I had, I went through the list, I mean, it is, it's a, it's a, it's an enormous list, for those of you that are watching, it's three pages long, it's much, too, much, much more than we had anticipated, um, getting thrown in, and I think some of it is due to, uh, the interim process that we're in, so there were a few things here that, um, I felt we could, um, easily take off the list, because, um, we have in-house, we have people that could pick it up for us, um, the email in the interim, and the finance director's email box, um, is a big thing, and going through that and sending that off to the right people, um, could be handled by our, um, very own, um, director of Planning and Economic Development, she's offered to take that task, which I think is a big task, and I've been very concerned about it, because it should be a department head that's doing that, um, and redirecting those, those emails, so that, um, if some, if some of the email is not meant for us, but for other departments, she'll recognize that and send that off, so I thought we should lift that off of her list, um, and another thing that jumped out at me was to be on call all day, every day, that, that just should not happen, we, we don't have the staffing for anybody to be on call every night of every day of the week, I mean, I, I have a son that works in logistics, and he's on call five nights a week, but that's his job, that's what he was hired to do. When we hired the administrative coordinator, I don't think we ever said, you know, oh, by the way, keep your phone by your bed all night, because you might get a call, so I feel like we should speak to our IT guy about this and find out, um, what we're paying him for, because the department head should report to the IT person if there's a, a problem with their equipment, um...
No, that should be, somebody needs to coordinate there, you can't have every member of the every department at home.
But not all night long, not overnight, I mean, that's a ridiculous amount of time, and on the weekends, too, I mean, this, this job was supposed to only have been fourteen hours, and we've grown it to twenty-four or twenty-five, is it twenty-five now?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four, twenty-five, what, twenty-five, twenty-four, that's, I think that's manageable amount of hours, but I don't feel that it's fair to tell anybody they should have to be on call overnight, um, for the computers in this Town Hall, when nobody's here, I mean, just, it doesn't make any sense to me whatsoever, um, and then with respect to procurement and everything like that, all of these are the, the things that the, um, town administrator will soon take on, so in the interim, let me just see, I brought it with me, I'll hear it. In the interim, if we do not have a town administrator, which we do not, and we are not going to fill the financial director's position, the Board of Selectmen is the chief executive and administrative officer of the town, with the final authority over all executive and administrative decisions pertaining to issues under their control and authority as designated by state statutes, regulations, and town bylaws. Until the employment of a town administrator, the Board will continue to have day-to-day administrative control of the town of Corvlin, its departments, and employees within the Board's legal jurisdiction. All inquiries and questions pertaining to personnel, budget, and financial expenditures shall be directed in the first instance to the Board of Selectmen through his chairman or designated board member. I feel that we have to step up here in the interim on the procurement of large items, um, such as a senior van, and we talked to Sarah about coordinating that, but we've got to be the final authority on that, um, and we also spoke to Sarah about helping coordinate with the, um, bond anticipation notes for the water and sewer replacement of pipes, but again, we, we are elected to this job, this is what our job is when there's not a town administrator here, and I don't feel that we should at all abdicate our responsibilities on these issues, not procurement for sure, not personnel, um, not, um, the contracts and the leases and all of the things that require, um, following the laws and procuring, I mean, I, I think Kathy's job is to assist us in our process, certainly, but the buck stops here, and we have to step up and take responsibility, I think it's a good idea to have the, um, Director of Planning and, um, Economic Development take on the email box, because she's willing to, and she's got the right qualifications for that, um, we have Sarah handling the large procurement items, um, so that should help take that down. Um, I just feel that we can't keep asking Catherine to take on more responsibilities, because the budget is set, and we have no way to change her salary at this juncture, town meeting just voted, it'd be unethical of us to turn around and say, oh, yeah, they just voted, they discussed her hours, and now we're gonna just change that. Um, we knew all this at town meeting, and I feel that we have to try and work within the confines of what we asked the voters to do, and I especially don't want to see us generate another significant deficit like we did this year, this year it was unexpected, things just kept happening, but now we know, we know where we're going, we know what we're supposed to do, I say that we stay the path and keep within our budget.
Uh, anybody else? Dan, go, go ahead.
Um, I think the issue is, uh, what can and can't Catherine do within this scope of this list? Um, you know, the Board of Selectmen, uh, we delegate, I don't abdicate or run and hide, I just, but I have a job during the day, and it's the people in Town Hall and elsewhere within this town that actually run the town, we just come here and we're advisors, so, um, my question is to Catherine, if you don't mind, what is it that is, uh, feasible and what isn't feasible, or what would you like to line item veto on here that you don't want, if you feel comfortable, or you don't feel comfortable, or you think this ought to be an executive session, I defer to you.
Um, I don't think it needs to be executive, I've been doing all this.
I think you have to be on a microphone, otherwise it's gonna sound weird.
I mean, if I could say, Mr. Chairman, I mean, if, if you're capable of doing all these things, and you're a superwoman, then I, I thank you. things and you're a superwoman, then I thank you for doing everything.
Definitely not a superwoman.
All right.
I have been doing all these things.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't say I have the authority to do the procurement. I don't have the authority to sign contracts, anything like that, but I am doing all the legwork. I'm doing all the phone calls, all the paperwork, getting everything lined up so the board can make their decisions and do the executive part that the board was designed to do. So normally, you're right, it would be a town administrator that does these, these jobs. We just don't have one yet. We had a finance director for a very limited time, and that didn't work out, so again, they fall back on me. And even when we did have a finance director, I was still doing a lot of this backup work.
Correct.
So my point was that I was hired for these very few things.
Yep.
And, I mean, and it's not just these items. Even today, there was another thing, I'm like, yeah, I take care of that too, but, and it's not every day, every single day, every, every week, but these things happen quite frequently. So I'm just asking to, you know, be compensated for the, the level of work that I am doing.
You're doing, basically, you're doing administrative work, clerical work, and, and I know with the former finance director, you were doing, you were doing a lot of clerical work for him, and he stated that, if I remember correctly, that it was, you're not paying him the salary or the hourly wage that you're paying him to do something that somebody could do at a lower rate of pay. And, and that, that happened before. That you're paying somebody that working below their pay scale.
Yeah, and, and I don't mind if other people want to pick up some of this slack. This is a lot. This is a lot to do in 25 hours. But now we're also taxing other departments when we already are in a skeleton crew. So I'll do whatever the board wants me to do. But this is, I just want them to, you guys to be aware, this is what goes on on a weekly basis.
Kathy, you got something?
Yeah, my concern, Catherine, and it's a genuine concern, is I, I want you to be able to be paid for the hours you work. So when I look at this list and I see this overnight, over the weekend, that's not legal for us to do that to you.
And it's not, that's not consistent.
I don't.
But if, you know, if a board member emails me at 10 o'clock at night and I'm there, I normally respond.
Guys, no more 10 o'clock emails on the weekend.
On Saturdays.
Well, number one, we're going to start here.
You know, Saturdays, there's employees that work. Sometimes the server goes down, sometimes the Wi-Fi kicks out. We have an issue at Strawberry Fields where sometimes the gate has to be opened. They're just, I just kind of wear a lot of different hats. So the on-call 24/7, am I busy that many hours? Absolutely not, you know, but I, I just want people to be aware that it's, you know, I'm not just here nine to 12, you know, so many days out of the week. I'm in and out often.
I, I went through this list several times. It's a long list. So I guess what I, what I suggest is that we move the finance director email box over to Rebecca temporarily till we get a TA in. And we did, we talked about this before, even when we had the part-time finance director, that the police chief has offered to be the personnel contact person if there's a personnel issue that you need an answer to, so you have a go-to person. He's more than happy to fill those shoes for a little while till we get this to-
Yeah, that was explained to us as to be the, for big issues, you know, if there was a grievance filed or things like that, but-
Or just a question on personnel issues that you wanted to bounce off.
He's not doing the job postings, he's not collecting the resumes.
No, 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 I understand.
He's not doing any of the insurance, you know, things like that, that Michelle and I share those duties.
Correct, but you'd be all right with him assuming the day-to-day if there's a question, personnel? Yep.
If he wanted to?
Yep, he said he would be glad to help out, so.
Let's get a letter from him that he would do it and his training in human resources.
Okay, letter from police chief.
Reading his paperwork, I don't see he's got any training in human resources. That's a, that's a specialty field now that-
But this is just an interim arrangement.
Still a specialty field. Bill, you had something?
Yeah, maybe Catherine can explain to us her specialty in human resource field. What degrees do you hold or specialty certificates?
I don't have any degrees though.
So no more or less than maybe Chief Gillan has.
I'm not running a police department.
Some questions on IT computers. Maybe you could give me some examples of what it is that you're discussing here. Computers, printers, office equipment, emails, troubleshooting, inventory scheduling, program tutoring and education for staff. What does that entail?
I've had different employees ask, how do you use Excel programs? How do you fix Microsoft Office programs? How do they troubleshoot, basically troubleshoot, you know, they have a printer error because now their printer, their computer isn't mapped to a local printer. Could we task IT to do this? Absolutely, but I'm significantly cheaper than a $200 an hour IT person.
How many, how many folks need that kind of, I mean, considering the staff here is, been here pretty long, how many, how many staff members actually need that kind of help on a daily, even weekly basis that they have trouble with an Excel spreadsheet or a Word document?
It happens, Bill.
I know it happens, I'm just asking how many times? Give me an example.
Maybe once.
So it's not a big deal?
It's not a huge deal, but again, if I'm working on one task and, and they call, it's not something that I can say, oh, I'll get to that when I get to it. You know, they need help right then, you know, so I have to restructure, go help them out, and then come back to the task that I was doing. So it takes time to, to evaluate, you know, troubleshoot, because, you know, computers, it's never simple as just pushing a button. So it, it takes time, you know, maybe, maybe in a given week, is it two hours? I would say probably. Some weeks it's six or 10 hours.
Well, I can help out there. I can hold a, a class for all the staff on Excel, Word, Access, PowerPoint. I do it all, I'm really fairly good at it.
So if you want to come into a class, I'm sure that-
We can do a Saturday class, and I can ask, you know, who's got trouble? We can start at basics 101 and carry it through to pivot tables and V lookup's and-
Saturday class, you're going to have to pay them to come in.
I may have to go to this class.
They're not, they're not, they're not coming in on a Saturday without compensation.
Someone to help fix something at that time.
Maybe I'll take a day off and come in on my own time. I, I know that when you were originally hired, Denise was here.
Yes, only Fridays.
And a, a lot of this stuff has morphed because the interim kind of delegated a lot of this stuff to you.
A lot of it I, I picked up on my own before the finance director was here, and then while Kevin was here, I, I helped him with much of this stuff, and since he's left, a considerable amount has come back onto my desk again.
So now, just moving along, the town government study is basically completed, there's no more, there's no more work to be done in that. I mean, they've-
Still doing correspondence for them, coordinating with legal and helping them post their agendas and fielding phone calls. I'm still doing work for them.
They still have, they, even after town meeting and their, their work is complete, they still have meetings?
Yep, actually, 10 minutes ago, I was just talking with Bill Hewig about something that Joe Demore is looking for.
There was one other thing here. It was, it had to do with, it had to do with finance. Who was that? Oh, assisting the treasurer's department is needed and billing. So is there a, is there a, is there a bandwidth problem in the treasury department or in the finance department even with the temps we now have?
I haven't had to sit in there in a few weeks, maybe a little bit longer than that, to help with, with entering payments or helping with, you know, getting bills out or things like that. But yeah, it's happened and definitely happened numerous times in the last six months.
That shouldn't happen at all. We should be, we should be fully staffed, especially with the temps now we have in here. They shouldn't be dragging you in there at all, period. I mean, that's, I mean, that's just, I don't understand that, and I don't understand why nobody in the finance department has brought that to our attention, that, hey, we have to drag Catherine in here to do billing and assisting with our work because we don't have the bandwidth.
It's not super frequent, Bill, but it, it does happen, and that's why I put it on the list. I want, I just want the board to be aware that there's a lot of-
Oh, but again, even if it doesn't, even if it happens once, then there's a problem in finance because as far as we know, they have the staffing and the bandwidth to perform all their daily functions every day. And now you're telling me that they don't, then we should have heard it from them that, hey, board, we don't, we don't have the staffing or the bandwidth to perform everything we need to do, we've got to pull in other people and other resources. So that is of concern to me because this is the first time I've heard if it happens once, it's a concern because I'm under the belief that they're completely staffed and fully staffed and operating fine. The other thing is, I, I don't know how you add anything more to this list. This has got to be pared down in half in order to accomplish the goal of keeping that under the, the number of hours that town meeting is, is authorized. And even at town meeting, I believe you, Mr. Chair, bumped up the requested number of hours.
I didn't bump it up, town meeting bumped it up, I just voted in favor of it.
Well, you requested it, and town meeting voted for it. So we've got to do our best to pare this, this list down so that we don't have these overages or-
Well, let me ask you if, who's going to do it? Somebody has to do, perform this work. And do you have any suggestions on who should be doing this work? Because as stated, that you thought that the treasurer's department was capable of handling that stuff, but apparently they're not.
Then we need to hear from the finance department on why they're not capable of handling it with fully staffed and temps. I think that's, that's, that's the question that needs to be answered. As far as the IT things, I think the department heads should be the, the first go-to person. They should learn their systems, they should know their systems, they should understand their computers, and they should be able to help out their employees when they get in trouble. This is, this is, I mean, this is something every, every department head ought to know how to do, and if they don't know how to do-
It's department heads that I'm helping as well. It's not just-
Department heads ought to know how to do this. This is, some of this stuff is, is basic and instrumental and necessary for the performance of their jobs. So if they can't do it, then we need to address that situation and either provide them with a training, education, or tools necessary that they can do these things on their own without seeking outside resources or help.
Does that make, I would be the tool training them and helping them?
Not necessarily, no. That's, that's, that's just an assumption. That's not necessarily true.
Okay.
There are classes, there are online classes, there's a great website on there called Learn It, where I've devoted a number of times to learn new applications like OneNote or, or Access or PowerPoint. They're fantastic, they're free of charge, and you can advance through the, through the courses as you want in your free time, and they're beneficial to anybody. I mean, the knowledge you take from these is yours forever, it's not proprietary to the town of Groveland, they belong to you, they're skill sets now that you've acquired. And it behooves our department heads to have those skill sets. So I don't know why they're not trained in, in some of these or have those already.
I think they, for the most part, Bill, they are. You have very talented staff in town hall, and they just, like, I'm sure you do, you have to go to Learn It because there's one little thing that you might not figure out. I'm not saying I know all the answers either, sometimes I have to do a tutorial to be able to explain it to them, but it's a help to have someone in town hall that can answer the quick questions to, why isn't this formula working? Or how do I get to my printer? Or my email's not working, I got an email from you today, email's not working, what do you want me to do? Just it, these aren't like every single day, hours and hours and hours. It's a little bit this week, a little bit this week, a little bit this week, but it's, it's very comprehensive.
Exactly, so what my goal is to take a little bit off this week, a little bit off this, and a little bit off that, so now it fits into that 24 to 25 hours that the town has allotted you not to sprinkle so much dust onto the plate that it can't be eaten in one 24 to 25 hour session. That, that should be the goal here, not to somehow burden you with, with more tasks or more responsibilities or, you know, more things that just overwhelm you and be beyond your skill set. It's not fair to you, it's not fair to, it's not fair to anybody at that point.
Right.
Jason, you had something?
Yeah, in terms of the finance department, I don't think they're adequately staffed. I mean, we don't have a treasurer collective.
We need to get a treasurer.
We have somebody that's, the temps, but that's one day, and you might get two people. So I don't think that they're staffed, and we did know about it because particularly when the bills went out for taxes, they did talk to us about it because they didn't have people, and even Mike Wood said, I'll go down there and stuff envelopes if I have to.
Sure.
So, so they, they is aware of that. I think the, the biggest problem is Catherine can't say no. And when you get interrupted when you're in the middle of something, like she said, it takes time to get back to what you're doing. And I think Catherine has to say no a lot more. And to your point, the department heads should be the ones that do the research when something doesn't work. However, what happens when the email doesn't work? We're not here, who do we call? We call Catherine because she's here. She can reset the router when nobody's Wi-Fi is not working because that's what she does. So it's, it's very, very challenging because we do need to have somebody here that can do certain things. But I, I do agree with you that the department heads need to be the ones that do the research to figure out how to do a lot of the problems that they come across. But to differentiate it, it becomes very difficult.
To that point, maybe, then maybe the town needs more cross-training so that we're not so reliant and dependent upon one person. If Catherine, God forbid, gets hit by a bus tonight, do we close the doors and say we're done? We can't reboot the servers, we can't reboot the email? I mean, much like we were leaving ourselves in a very precarious position with no one to fill in or be a backstop for our town clerk, are we now putting ourselves in the same possible predicament that if something were to happen with our lovely Ms. Warden here, that we would be in a devastatingly catastrophic position because we don't have adequate backup or cross-trained employees that can pick things up?
I don't know if it's training or cross-training, just the inability to do the research to find out what and how to fix something. That's not necessarily something you can train.
Wait a minute. It shouldn't take more than five minutes for somebody to be shown, this is, if the server goes down, this is what you need to do.
For that, I agree. But, yeah, there's, there's, there's other things when you're working on something like on a program and you come across a problem that you haven't seen before, like you were asking about the certificate, it's no longer valid, that's coming up on the email. Now you have to research it.
You just Google it.
Yeah, you can Google it. The department head should be able to do that without an issue.
Right.
Because that's exactly what she just said she does.
Yep.
Well, I agree.
Catherine?
It takes somebody to actually, to do that work. Like I said, she can't say no, so it's very difficult to get pulled away and come back to it, and it's time-consuming. I've been telling her for, I don't know, five months, say no.
My problem is that if I'm not doing it, it's going to fall and trickle out to other departments that are already overtasked. And to, and to Bill's point, yeah, this, is this sustainable? This isn't sustainable, but for a time, I'm asking the board to consider it until we get a TA. When the TA comes in, they're going to right, right the ship, they're going to delegate where, where things have to go, who's going to do them, am I qualified to do these things? Should I be doing them? Should I be doing other things for them? I don't, I don't know what the TA is going to do when they get here. But until the TA gets put in place, somebody's got to do them. In our departments- And our departments are busy, they're very, very busy.
Dan, back to you.
Yeah, if, um, I don't know if the people are watching tonight see the list, but in the box, that's what you hired to do?
Correct.
And then this column, and this column, and that, that's what you're doing?
And then some, yeah.
What would happen if the Board of Selectmen, suppose we were to say, as the executive body of the town, only do what's on this list and tell everyone else no? What would happen?
I have a pile about this big on my desk.
Yeah.
You're welcome to go through it.
So what would those people that called you? Because I, I can relate to you. I mean, I get phone calls all day, I got a quick question.
Yep.
Well, the answer might not be quick, you know? What's EMC squared? Uh, can you explain it to me and why? Uh, even if I knew the answer, uh, I don't know that I'd have the time, the week, the month, the year to write it on the chalkboard for you. So you get interrupted frequently, and you seem like a super nice person. I don't, I don't, I don't...
Sometimes.
I only know you for a short period of time, but, uh, you know, everyone asks you, and you say, yeah, I'll help you because that's the spirit of what you do.
Well, I, I was under the...
And if, and if you have time, you fit it in.
Yeah, I mean, I was under the impression when Denise left, everybody rolled up their sleeves and everybody chipped in, and I seemed to be the person with...
But...
Not the most offer, but the most time to offer towards any of these issues.
But here's the dilemma. We're in a, you know, is the tide coming or going, you know? We're in the uptide, we're, we're stuck on the rocks here, so everything's falling on her. And she could just say, oh, it's not my job, it's not on a, you know, it's not on the job description. You post that on your door.
Yep.
Right? Maybe put it on the phone message answering machine, this is what I do, everything else, uh, no. Right?
I could. I, I, I'm not built that way, so...
And I, I understand that, but I mean, it, you know, I can't sit here and ask you to do the four pages, uh, and I, I know that it's, the frequency may be infrequent on many things, but, you know, it's the aggregate of all of them. If you do one thing once in a while, but there's a hundred of them, you're doing a hundred tasks. So that's just, that's just the math of it. So I'm concerned about overdrawn accounts, running deficits, violating warrants and, and on the bus and, and the approval process in Massachusetts, but the reality might be that we need to, in the interim, until we hire the people in this board, it behooves us to fast-track it. We don't want to make, you know, hasty decisions, you know? We got to get the right person in here so we do what wants to do right, you know? No false starts. I mean, it's really pressing on this board to whoever we hire, we get it right.
Agreed.
Or it could be a disaster. So, you know, we want to avoid that, but, you know, I think in terms of fairness, either we give her the marching orders that this is all she has to do, or we have to pay her.
I, I don't think you can, you can just keep it to that little box. There's, uh, the, the other stuff has got to get done, and, uh, as it was stated, the other employees are taxed to the max. So if you start handing them some of this other work, they need to be compensated for it. Uh, that, uh, the same thing with, uh, with Catherine. I mean, she ought to be compensated for some of this work, uh, and it, I think if we had, if we had a, a finance director, a lot of this work wouldn't have fallen on her. Uh, I think she ought to be congratulated for the work that she does, she's, uh, very responsible. Uh, and, um, I, at this point, I don't have any suggestions. Dan, do you have any?
I, I defer back to you. What is feasible and what isn't? If your con, if your constraints are what was budgeted in terms of hours and, and comp, what's feasible and what's not? I, I just don't expect you to work, uh, you know, an 80-hour work week or 60 or 50 if you're getting paid for 24. So, you know, I, I don't think you're the type of person, correct me if I'm wrong, but, you know, i- if you go over a couple hours, I don't think you're splitting hairs with it. But at some point, it deviates too far from what you, what, what it was designed to be. So, you know, I mean, maybe, you know, I don't know if you ever have an easy week, but I'm a, I'm a kind of, you take the good with the bad. Sometimes you roll your sleeves up, you put in extra effort, and other times you can coast a little bit. But, uh, usually it's just, there's so much work, uh, you never run out. So what do you think? I mean, what, if the status quo until, if it's the status quo until, uh, uh, you know, those positions are filled, then is it going to break? You know?
Um, no, I mean, if the board wants me to stick to the 25 hours, I will do as much as I can in those 25 hours. Will they all get done? Does the board want to know on a, you know, keep up to date on a weekly basis what's not getting done and what is to, to make adjustments that way? Um, I was just, you know, I, I, just following suit with other, other departments that have asked for a stipend with increased responsibility. This was all I was responsible for, and I'm doing a considerable amount more, so...
Can, can, Mr. Chair, I mean, can this board consider? I think if I'm reading what Mr. Sluckman O'Neill said, that, you know, the board needs to go on, uh, you know, each department chair, can we shift that burden back on to them and, uh, see if we get some, uh, feedback or static that trickles up? I mean, uh, you know, eh, you know, many hands make light work. So if you could delegate some of that and shift it back to the departments where maybe it belongs, um, you know, if it's 20 hours worth of work and it's divvied up, maybe it's not such a burden, you know? But I, I think you got to get some things off that list. I mean, it's just, you know, it's just, it's just quite the list.
Yeah.
I, I don't know how you do it in 24 hours, so...
We're getting it done.
Oh, okay. So, um, again, I think our, our Director of Economic Planning, and it goes on for a few more words, I'm so sorry, I haven't memorized it yet, um, should be tasked with the finance director email box just because she does have the education and training to know where those, um, where those emails should go. And that would, that would take some stress off of my mind because I've been really concerned about that aspect of what's going on there. And then to, um, Selectman McDonald's point about the other department heads being advised, you know, that they need to step up and that Catherine is not the place you go to drum everything on, that is, um, the reason for the resolution that I read. I, I kind of crafted it as a message to all department heads and employees so that we could kind of redirect, and I just, I made copies. It's the pleasure of the board to take a look at these, please. Thank you. Um, and we could send this out as is, if you wouldn't mind, thank you, um, to all department heads just to kind of clarify, uh, where the board is and, and also maybe hopefully to, um, take, take this...
Get up when I'm old.
The idea that going to Catherine's door is the first stop and maybe say, come to the Board of Selectmen if possible, get on our agenda if you have a question, because...
I think that's where it started, Kathy?
Well, yeah, and I think that communication right now has been a sort of a vacuum. At least that's what I've heard, um, in discussions with some of the town employees, that they have not heard from the Board of Selectmen about what are we doing during this interim period? What do we expect from our departments? And I feel like this, this kind of encapsulates what I would expect, um, us to send out to all of the department heads so that they understand that we are looking at all this. I think your list is phenomenal working document for us. Thank you for that because it really, um, kind of brings to the forefront all the different things, and I think that we should work on trying to pare it down so that you can stay within your, your hours of work because you shouldn't, um, be on call all weekend, flood out no to that. I know we have an IT person, um, if we spend some time and talk to them, we can find out. Can department heads call directly? I think there was a, when I was first on the board, I was filling out a one-year term, and, um, my understanding was Denise kind of wanted that, control that a little bit so that everybody wasn't calling IT all the time. But I do trust our department heads that if they have an IT issue in the department, if they want to call Chris Collins and, and ask a question, I don't have a problem with that. I don't, I don't like, in the digital age, I think it takes more time for me to email Jason to ask him to ask Ed for an agenda item than for me to just ask Ed for an agenda item. You know what I mean? I think you got to be careful about having a coordinator who becomes a person that people go to so that she can go to someone else, ask them, and then that person comes back, and then she goes back and goes back. That's, uh, redundant and inefficient in, in such a digital age where things are happening so quickly. So, um, I do think, um, something like this directive, if, if you want to, did you get a copy of it, Dan? Selectman McDonald?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, great. Yeah, if you, if you want to add to it or change it or anything, um, fine.
Yeah, I, yeah, let me read this out.
Okay, go ahead.
The Board of, this is, I don't know who, I don't know who drew this up. Uh, who, who drew this up?
I did, this is for us.
Okay.
Yeah.
The Board of Selectmen is the chief executive administrative officer of the town of Groveland with final authority over all executive and administrative decisions pertaining to issues under the control and authority as designated by state statutes, regulations, and town bylaws. Until the employment of a town administrator, the board will continue to have a, have day-to-day administrative control of the town of Groveland, its departments, employees within the board's legal jurisdiction. The Board of Selectmen, uh, all inquiries in, in question pertaining to personnel, budget, financial expenditures shall be directed in the first instance to the Board of Selectmen through its chairman or designated board member. Uh, the, the Board of Selectmen is not, has nothing to do with the day-to-day administrative control of the town of Groveland. That's beyond the scope of the Board of Selectmen.
Read the bylaw.
It, uh...
We are.
I, I know it's in the bylaw, but what you're saying here is the day-to-day administrative control, the Board of Selectmen not here on a day-to-day basis to handle, handle these affairs.
Correct.
And like Dan had said before, he has a job, Bill has a job, uh, Jason...
I have a job.
Kathy has a job.
Yes, so what I'm suggesting is that personnel, I suggest the police chief has offered to step up and handle that small day-to-day kind of questions on personnel. Catherine's already tracking the personal days, right, and vacations, and then we just need to be kept informed like we were before. We always were informed when a department head was going on vacation. Um, we were always got a notice of it in our correspondence. It wasn't necessarily an agenda item, it's just, just so we know, you know, that this department head is on vacation. That's all. It's a simple process.
You, you had something?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Suggestion is this, I mean, a matter of, you know, tact, uh, I mean, it's just, it, until we fill the positions we need to fill, I think it's just a matter of approach and we ask the department heads that exhaust all your remedies before you go to, you know, just, just as a courtesy. You're not saying, I don't want anyone saying that, you know, you know, she's not going to be helpful, and I don't think she'd ever say that, but just until we fill those positions, see what you can do on your own, and if you, you exhaust your remedies and you, and you have nowhere else to go, then you, then you go up the chain, you know? You go to her, you go to the chairman. But, you know, in the interim, we got to work together and people got to roll their sleeves up and see what you can do without just delegating. And I'm not saying that they, they're just giving her all that, you know, scutwork or whatever, you know? I just, I'm not saying that, I don't know. I'm not here on a day-to-day basis, I don't want to insult anybody, I just don't know. But just whatever they can do on their own, we'd appreciate it until we fill those spots. But, you know, appreciate, you know, we are the executive, uh, uh, body here and, you know, it's, we could go in that direction and, you know, if they read this, they'll say, yeah, well, you know, we're the boss, you know?
It just, there's been no communication.
I don't want to be top-down, you know, management here, I, I just, you know what? We got to work together, what's working, what isn't. I, I just think you're overwhelmed, and again, it's just because there's vacancies and everything's fallen on you, and you're the go-to person with, uh, no one else knows who to call. It's like, you know, you know, years ago Nancy was here. She was like, you know, somebody, it's like, you know, ask town hall a question, who, who are you going to call? You. Who would I call? You. I try not to.
That's okay. That's what I'm here for.
Go ahead.
That's what I was going to say to Kathy. Um, you, you were talking about like go to this person and go to this person for IT. IT has specifically requested there be one person. They want protocol so that there is a coordinator, it's not a free-for-all, there is just one. But that's just one department. The other part that I wanted to say to this is...
But could I just adjust?
...come to me because I am the coordinator to the board.
Yes.
And that, that was their conduit to the board, and that's how I think a lot of this started, is because I am here, I am your administrative coordinator as the board is the executive part of that.
Correct.
So, uh, the, the administrative part of it falls to me because there is no town administrator or finance director right now.
Great, and I'm glad you said it that way. I don't want you to, you hired administrative coordinator, administration is different. And so I want to make sure that, um, responsibilities like, like the finance director email box, like the procuring of a senior van and the, and the bond anticipation notes for the water pipes, those are at a, a, a much more complex level, and I want to make sure that we're covering things like that at the higher level. Um, myself personally, um, I, I would be glad to free up, um, her hours from sitting here watching our boring meetings so that she could have more hours here in the town hall. And I would be very glad to make like, if there's an action list that we come up with from our meeting, I'd be glad to do that for the board at the end of the meeting, run it by you all, and then, and then forward it on to you, you know, so you know if there's anything that you have to be actionable because we're chewing up, you know, all of these hours of her time here too. And, and in the interest of, of better serving the taxpayers, I'd rather have her in the town building during the day than sitting here, um, at night right now. I mean, I know when we hired you, we wanted you at our meetings, but right now, looking at this list, that would be my recommendation to, to cut that back, have you set us up and, and depart, and that way would free up the three or four hours that you spend here every other Monday. So that would help, I hope, a little bit. Um, my other thought is just, I don't know how the board feels about it, but there have been times, um, on the annual town report where we have postponed trying to produce the report at that moment in time for a brief period. I know that legally we are responsible to produce a town report, um, but we're very short-staffed right now, and I didn't know how the, the board felt about postponing the town report till we get some staffing in here, a treasurer and a TA at least. If, if the board's willing to hold off on that, um, I'm talking just till like September, maybe, uh, that would take another, that's a large document, um, and it certainly shouldn't fall all on you to produce a town report. You've only worked here 10 months. It's a big undertaking.
Yeah, I mean, I...
Yeah, so, so...
Having was here, I, I helped assemble things, but I, nothing's happened since that point.
Right, so, yeah, so I would, I would hope we could put a pause button on that and then, and then free up some hours out of our meetings as a way towards, um, trying to help out on this.
You had something, Bill?
Um, just a quick question, the, the IT consultant?
Yes.
Do we pay like a maintenance agreement or a yearly...
Yeah, we have a budget.
Maintenance charge?
We have a budget.
No.
It's a big budget.
It's, it's by the hour.
It's by the hour?
Well, we have a budget, I'll tell you.
Um, and we pay them, we pay the bill. So we're the customer?
I'm not sure what you're asking, Bill.
The, the IT consultants we use.
Yep.
To them, we're the client?
The town of Groveland, yes.
And, um, I, I guess if they, if, I guess what I'm trying to say, if they're pushing back on us, saying we only want one person to call us, we should push back on them and say, we pay the bill, we need people, whoever needs to call you, call you. Because what, if you're sick one day, you went on vacation, which everybody has to do, does the world stop? Again, it seems that there's, all the keys are in one hand, and it makes me nervous that if something happens to that key holder...
Sure. No, it makes sense.
We're, we're in trouble, so...
They, they requested one, uh, point of contact, so before it was Denise, and then Denise passed the baton to me, um...
But now we...
...scheduling for billing.
Yeah.
So if, if everyone in the building is calling...
Oh, for billing?
And I receive, I receive the bills, how am I going to know who did what? The hours coordinated, um, for scheduling and coordinating, having someone come into the building because we have a new computer that needs to be set up, or there's problems with different programmings that I can't fix, but, so it needs a, a heavier hitter to come in. I have to schedule those items to try to... I have to schedule those items to try to maximize the use of that individual coming in, so we're not paying $200 for him to show up to do, you know, oh, just adjust an email there, and then he's got to come back the next day because a different department called and said I need help.
Right, but if, I'm just going to throw an example, if, if the Department of Economic Development and great things for the Town of Groveland needs IT help because they don't know how to turn on the computer, just going to make it simple, wouldn't it make more sense for that person to reach out directly to the IT person, say, I'm having trouble turning on my computer, then reaching out to you? Who then reaches out to them? Who then reaches back to you? Who then you reach out to that person? It seems like the more we can cut out the middleman, the more we can trim your time back and take you out of some of these things and make the department heads more accountable for themselves as well as their departments.
I mean, you could, Bill, but would you rather pay me $19 an hour or IT $200 an hour to, say, push the on button?
Well, it doesn't make a difference because if you called to ask them how to turn on the, push the on button, and our economic development or our water or sewer, if somebody calls to ask the same question, the fee doesn't change. It's the same fee.
But I guess what I'm...
We don't get a discount because you called, right?
...a lot of those questions I handle. I take care of, I take care of a big portion of them.
Right, but if...
Which saves the town money.
Well, I, again, I guess I don't understand, they, so they charge a different fee if you called than if, say, calling from water and sewer calls?
Town pays me $19 versus paying IT $200 if I can fix the problem. So they, they call me, hey, we have this problem.
If you can fix the problem, but I'm saying, when you have to call the IT consultants...
Correct.
Doesn't it make more sense to empower the department heads to make the call their own, on their own, and then take you out of the middle? Because at that point, you're just a messenger.
Yeah, but they, they, they give me the courtesy to see if it's something I can fix before we're going to pay the top dollar of a problem. You know, if it's, you know, a mapping of a printer, that's, that's not easy. Maybe you can do it, I don't know. I learned how to do it, I can map the printer. Or I can call IT and the next time they come in, which will be, you know, a week from Tuesday, he can map the printer and it'll cost $200 for him to sit there and map the printer.
Oh, 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 yeah, it almost goes back to that old saying, you can give me a fish and feed me today, you can teach me how to fish and feed me forever. We need to teach some people how to fish so they can eat on their own. I mean, mapping, mapping a printer is not, and I don't want to make light of it, but it shouldn't be so technologically complex that it shouldn't be able to be taught to someone, especially department heads, who should have a little bit, we expect to have a little bit more education, a little bit more savvy, and a little bit better skillset to be able to handle that on their own. Because some of those, I mean, those aren't really difficult, the complicated tasks.
They're not difficult, Bill, and if that's what you want the departments to do, that's great, but you're asking very busy departments to fix kind of small problems?
I'm asking people to be accountable for themselves and be, and maintain, and be able to maintain the departments they run. I'm not asking them to do anything...
They'll do whatever the Board wants me to do.
...which is crazy.
You don't want me to do IT?
But if you're...
I don't have to do IT.
If you're responsible for a department, you should be responsible for a department. You know what I mean?
Many other towns have an actual IT department, and they pay someone $100,000 to sit there and field questions, did you turn it on, did you turn it off? They...
Right, and I get it, and there's corporations out there like G that have a whole floor of those people.
Exactly.
But we're not G and we're not a lot of those towns. We have to live within our budgetary constraints. Sometimes they're not always pretty, sometimes they're not always convenient, sometimes they're not always agreeable, but it's, 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 we voted on a town meeting, and I don't know how we get around that, and I don't know why, to ask department heads to pick it up a little and to learn more and be more accountable and more knowledgeable about what they do, what they run, their tools every day, I don't think is asking too much of them. I think it's, I think it should be a requirement, I think it should be something that every department head ought to want to do and want to know so that they are the go-to person in their department, which, that's what they should be.
I don't know what to say, Bill. Like, I mean, if you have problems with your computer, who do you call?
Most of the time, I don't call anybody, because this is my tool. This is, this is what I use for a living every day.
But if you can't fix it, who do you call? You call someone that has a little more knowledge about it. So all I'm saying is, I, I am happy to do it, I'm happy not to do it.
Right, I would call, exactly, I would call someone with more knowledge. I wouldn't call, I wouldn't call someone with lesser knowledge because they can't help me, all they're going to do is either point me in the right direction or be the go-between to the person I really need to talk to to help me with my issue. That's what I'm getting at.
I guess that's where I don't understand, because you keep putting in that, you know, the budget was defined, but you want the departments to call the more expensive option for smaller problems that can be handled from a desk that's six feet away from them.
If somebody has a problem mapping a printer, 781-856-8169, I can walk them through it in five minutes or less.
All right, let's move on, Dan.
Just, I think you have to triage your job and you're stuck between a rock and a hard place. But as far as, I mean, Sluckman O'Neill, I mean, I don't, you know, similar, I think it's similar to, you know, we have a point guard on legal services, we discussed that. If you have all the departments calling the town lawyer, you're going to run up a bill. So if, so if there's a need for IT services, somehow it might need to be delineated so that whatever our IT budget is, it's allocated to each department. Maybe, maybe we, you know, should get some feedback from the department heads on, you know, X amount of hours for IT services, and again, there's, it's variable, but there's a law of averages. But, you know, so I see your point, okay, but I, you know, but I also see her point in that, you know, if, you know, someone sent my email up for the laptop I didn't bring tonight, it's on my dining room table, but that's what you're doing in a rush, but I appreciate that, and for me to figure that out, I don't know, I don't know what the protocol is for town government emails and how to set it up and whatnot, and I appreciate what you're saying, Bill, but I mean, I don't want to continue a professional education seminar on a one-off task, so, you know, that's not the best use of my life for anyone else, it's a specialty, so, yeah, you use the special, specialists for the specialty items, the things you do infrequently, but somehow there needs to be control on that budget. I hear what you're saying, and I agree with, in part, but I also see it as problematic if all the department heads have just the free rein on making that phone call to the IT guy, it'd be somewhat, you know, I, I could go hours and hours and hours with our town council, believe me, I could, I could eat that budget myself talking to those people. I mean, you want to talk, I've never run out of words and debates and conversations, so, you know, that's on the extreme, and again, most things aren't extreme, you know, there's parameters and there's a reasonable range. So could we ask each department what their IT needs are and maybe we could allocate that budget? And then once they go over it, I mean, maybe that's a solution, I don't know, but it seems like she's the funnel on this stuff, and if she can do it in five minutes or less, then fine, you know, why delegate a five-minute task? Just get rid of it, get it off your tabloids.
Well, and I, and to talk about Bill, it's that, I, I don't know anybody that knows all the answers. I haven't met that person yet. Everybody needs help at some point. Sometimes you go to somebody, Bill, and I'm sure that you've gone to a secretary, how do I do this? And, and don't tell me you haven't, I know you have, Dan, the same thing. He probably in his business, he's probably gone to one of his clerks and said, can you help me out with this? We've all done that, and she, she is, is able to handle some of this stuff before it gets to the IT person that we're paying by, by the hour, and, you know, it, it seems to make sense, if she can handle something. Would you rather have somebody, a department head that doesn't know, that has a problem, would you rather have them ask, or like you suggested, Google it and try to figure it out and screw the whole system up, where it might take an IT person half the day to straighten it out? I'd rather have them get somebody in that knows it, you, I don't know, we've got some smart people that are department heads, I don't know any of them that know all the answers, that have, that can do everything, and, and I, I don't think you'll find anybody to do that. Dan, go ahead.
What is our IT budget? I mean, and how many departments do we have, and can we carve it up and say, you know, can you sparingly use, you know, 10 hours of the budget or X? I mean, is there a way to allocate this?
I'm looking at, it looks like in this report, it's $58,000 for computer hardware maintenance and license fee, then below that is hardware and software expense, and what I was going to, what I was going to offer, I like the idea perhaps giving the part of it that's maintenance, maybe a chunk to each department, but also have to say, you know, that one of the things that I was forced to do, and I'm glad that I was forced to do it, was to learn how to manage my own hard drive, set up my own apps, find my own apps, troubleshoot my own computer problems, and I had to learn it this year as a teacher because there was no way around it. I had to teach to a group in front of me and I had to run an online class with a group at home at the same time, and I never thought that I could do that, but I did certifications, I did courses. So I would imagine in the Microsoft, this is a Mac, but on the Microsoft side, there's the same kind of certification process that Apple has where you ask people to go through these certifications, so they're not sitting there always asking a question. Once you've gone through the training certification, you don't memorize it, but you know where the answers are, so then you don't go down the hallway. But of course, this year, I couldn't go down the hallway because they didn't want us to have contact with each other even while we're in the building, so I was forced to figure it out, and maybe because we're short-staffed, they can be forced to figure it out too, if maybe our consultant can point out some training, they're like certifications in MacBooks, I don't know what it's called in Microsoft, but some, some path of certification for people that are uncomfortable with the digital world that will help them be more comfortable, because personally, I like being able to know how to do things myself. I feel more empowered.
Okay, I think we've, did you, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I just, I feel like a lot of focus is on IT when it's not, that's not a huge chunk of my week, it's not a huge chunk of time. It's, it might be an hour one week, it might be three hours another week, but it's not, it, it's not where all my time is getting eaten up, my time is getting eaten up by a collective of all these items in addition to the tasks that I was hired for.
Well, it seems to me like if a department head or one of the employees calls you for a problem and it's something you can't fix right away, then you call IT.
Yeah, and coordinate it so that it's, things are done efficiently, and it's not, he doesn't show up one day and then has to show up the next day, and then he comes the third day. It's, they, they would prefer it, they've asked for it, they've requested it, that there's a protocol, there's a point person, and that there is a schedule put in place.
Okay.
So when I know someone's coming in, I will say to department heads and to employees, hey, so-and-so's coming in, does anyone have any IT issues that we can get sorted out quickly?
And you certainly wouldn't expect the IT person before he comes in to call all the department heads and see if they need anything.
He's not going to do that.
I think that's what they're talking about, is somebody to coordinate it. Okay, maybe we can just take this under advisement, we're...
Well, I think we should move those couple of items off, I think the email and the, you said if the police chief gives you a letter, the personnel, I just feel like we should move some things off.
Yeah, and I'd like to, I'd like to know, you mentioned about the town, the town report, are there any other legal requirements that the Selectmen are supposed to be doing that you'd like to have them put that on the back burner? I, I don't like to put legal responsibilities on the back burner.
Well, neither do I, but I don't think we should put it on Catherine, I think if you don't want a back burner, then this Board has to take on the town report. So, I mean, pick your poison here, because we've just decided that she's going to work her hours, and in order to do that, there'll be times when she's not here and people have to be able to do their jobs when Catherine's not here.
I'll get together with her and see what progress is made on the town report, and then we can...
Okay.
We can coordinate from there, but...
I thought you could take parking tickets.
I want to take this, let's see what's been done. We'll take this under advisement and...
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, go ahead.
If you need help with something from the Board, I mean, it's just, if you need help with the town report, then I guess we, you know, we either have to roll up our sleeves and do it, or we got to delegate it to someone else, so, you know, so some of that is going to percolate up to us, if you can't do it, you can't do it.
Right.
It's incumbent upon the Selectmen's office to...
Yeah, okay, thank you.
But we'll, we'll check with her and we'll have that for you by the next meeting, how we're going to proceed with that. All right, I think we're all set on that temporarily?
Got enough time on that?
Oh, we got, no, we don't, we're a little late. Thank you.
Can I just ask one question? So is this just getting tabled again? I mean, can I ask if I'm going to be receiving a stipend, am I going to be getting a bump in pay? Is there anything that's going to be, address the extra responsibilities that I'm doing on a consistent basis?
I think we could, in my opinion, we could speak with the town accountant and, you know, other department heads or employees got stipends for additional duties. Maybe we could talk to town accountant and see what is available, if, if anything, and we can proceed from there, and we'll put this on the agenda for the next meeting, again, follow-up. But we gave stipends to numerous employees because they took on additional duties when the former finance director left, some of them $300 a week or whatever, and then we kind of short-changed Catherine, that we, she was given duties that really wasn't given it to them, it just fell onto her without any stipend. So let's put that on the agenda for the next meeting and see if there's something available from town accountant to...
I'm not voting to do that, Mr. Chairman, with all due respect.
Nobody asked you to vote for it, we'll put it on the agenda for the next meeting, and you don't have to vote for it, we'll bring it up at the next meeting and if there's something available.
Sure.
And I'll, I'll talk to her this week, thank you.
With all due respect, Mr. Chairman, we just voted a budget. You spoke on town meeting floor...
With all due respect, we're done with the discussion of administrative coordinator duties, thank you.
Okay.
We'll, we'll move on to trash collection discussion of extra bag costs. Jimmy, you think you had something on this?
Yeah, I'm a new member of the Board of Health, and I see...
Why don't you introduce yourself to, sit down and introduce yourself to...
I'm Jim Stepanian, I've lived here over 40 years, and I decided I wanted to give back a little bit, so...
Great.
My neighbor said they were looking for people, so I got written in on the Board of Health.
Oh, I'd find out who those people were.
No, it's all right, I'm enjoying it so far, and it's interesting.
I wrote you in, I had to get the spelling.
The problem we're having, though, is a lot of people's trash isn't being picked up, Laurie gets bombarded with calls all day long. I called this customer service, I was on hold for half an hour, I kind of gave up, and I just don't know if you all are aware of what a problem it is right now in the town, so I volunteered because I heard there was a meeting tonight to come here and talk to you all about it.
Judging from the emails that, that I've been getting, if the other members are getting the same thing, there's a, there's a lot of complaints.
Yes, there is, and I think I heard somebody say they were tracking it, and tracking it doesn't do us any good with fixing a problem because the problem exists, it needs to be dealt with, and I don't know what the problem is, that it's not being dealt with. If you guys are aware of it, why isn't it being fixed? I mean, there's, one email said a lady was going to go to the news media. I mean, that's, that's a threat, but what if she did do that? And one lady said there was rats running out of her trash. I mean, it's kind of disgusting, I've never seen, he's seen or heard anything about that before, but being on the Board of Health, I'm being made aware of stuff like this, and there's all sorts of things, but the lady... And there's all sorts of things, but the lady has 24 hours and she's getting hammered. Your residents aren't getting their trash picked up. That needs to be addressed. You have a company that's supposed to do that job. And then I hear they're gonna give us a 13% increase possibly? And you guys didn't put it out to bid? I don't know, I'm hearing these things in the meetings. It might not be true, I may be misinformed, but I know for fact, reading the emails, that people are complaining about the trash not being picked up. So what are you gonna do about it? I mean, you're in control of the town, you guys are in control of the trash contracts. You re, I heard you renewed it. Why wasn't it put out to bid? That ball got dropped, from what I was told. It should've been gone out for bid. And I just don't understand, yeah, we all have to work from home, we all have a job. I have a job, I'm volunteering, I wanna give back, public servant. I wanna do that, but my townspeople can't get their trash picked up. Laurie gets calls constantly all day, I get emails all day from Laurie. You guys gotta do something, that's why I'm here tonight. Laurie was gonna come, but I said, no, I'll do it. So I don't have a problem with this. I have to talk to my customers and people and deal with problems in my construction business all the time. If somebody's not calling them to fix it, you have to do that. Or else Laurie's gonna get bombarded all day long, I'm gonna get emails all day long. People are maybe gonna go on TV and talk about us that their trash hasn't been picked up for three weeks. That's all I wanted to come and say. And I hope you guys figure it out because that's what you guys are here for, to figure these problems out.
In my opinion, I think we need to get, hold on one second, Jimmy. I think that we need to get the person from Waste Management, get him at the next meeting and.
That's not quick enough.
Well.
That's not quick enough.
Well, we.
In my opinion, if somebody calls me and says something I did is broken, I go fix it.
Yeah.
Another meeting, when's that gonna be, in a month?
No, two weeks.
That's not, that's not good enough because some people's trash hasn't been picked up for three weeks.
Yeah, I've got, I've got those emails myself.
They need relief.
And I sympathize with these people. I don't have the answers either.
That's why I'm here.
But the one that can give us the answer is Waste Management. And I don't think they've been giving us the correct answers.
No, they're not giving us very good service either.
No, they're not.
And you shouldn't have renewed their contract. You shouldn't have.
I mean, in my opinion, I think we ought to be contacting Town Council and get a breach of contract and get rid of them and get somebody else in here.
I mean, if you guys need more help with some of these things, the Board of Health used to do the trash, as far as I was told. You guys got enough things to do already, let the Board of Health take care of the trash contracts.
Or anybody got any comments?
The only comment I have is, yeah, as far as I know, it is the Board of Health's responsibility. So what is the Board of Health gonna do about it?
I'm doing, I'm doing. I have to do contracts with my people all the time.
They didn't do it and that's why we took care of it. We didn't put it out to bid because we didn't have the legal authority to do it at the time that it could go out to bid.
All right.
Right.
Okay. Why didn't you get it?
We didn't have the time, there's a certain amount of time that was, so what I wanted to ask.
Hold on, hold on, Bill, hold on, we got, only one person gonna be speaking at a time.
I'm sorry, I'm guilty of that too.
Okay, Jason, were you done?
Yeah, I'm done.
Bill?
Can I just correct, Jason, it's not, when this contract came up, we were told that this contract was going to increase by no more than 5%. I questioned that. We were assured that it would go up by no more than 5%. Until we got the contract, it was more than 5%. We did negotiate that down to 3. And at the time, we did suggest that it go out to bid.
But it didn't.
It didn't.
I'm not trying to put anybody on the carpet here, I just wanna do what's best for the town.
So do we.
Yes, but it's not getting done.
Unfortunately. Well, we're trying.
Okay, do you need help with that?
Certainly, any help you could provide.
All right, well, who do I talk to? I'll go to the guy's door tomorrow. I won't wait for the next meeting. I mean, I have a little bit of power, I was told, because I'm on the Board of Health now. But I don't, I just want things fixed. You guys got a lot to do here, she's got a lot to do here.
So do we.
I'm the new guy here, I'm ambitious, I wanna do something.
I know, I know that they are dealing with new drivers, they are dealing with new routes. I noticed because my, the trash collector has been in my house for the last 10 years. Suddenly, it's not him anymore. It's a new guy.
Well, we haven't had the same company for 10 years.
No, this has been a year and a half.
He's exaggeration.
It hasn't been the same company.
But it didn't go out to bid, not because we didn't want to, but because we were.
Well, people are suffering because we didn't.
But because we were told that the contract wasn't going to go up by that much. And then, once we determined it was, it was far too late in the process to do anything about it to send it out to bid.
Let the Board of Health take back the trash stuff then.
Listen, I don't think anybody here.
I'm gonna be here for three years.
I don't think anybody on this board would.
I'm not going anywhere.
I like this guy.
Would say no, but fact is, the last time it was in the Board of Health's hands, it didn't go well. And that's why it ended up here.
All right, well, maybe we have to communicate and work together for this. I mean, if you, I deal with contracts all the time, not on a scale of a town-wide basis, but I'm willing to learn, I'm willing to take some classes, like you're offering and stuff like that. I wanna do what's best for the people. I mean, they're not getting taken care of. And I spent a half an hour of my day trying to get them to come pick up my trash instead of bothering Laurie about it. Because she gets bothered by them all the time. There's plenty of other people have called and gotten hung up on wasting their time. They're wasting all of our time because they're not honoring the contract. Get rid of them, get rid of them. And getting somebody in that represents their company, they already know. They've been tracking all the complaints, they know. They know how many times Laurie calls them. Somebody's gotta do something, get rid of them. If they're not willing to do it, they gotta honor the contract, they're not doing it.
And I get it, and.
And that's all I really wanna do. I wanna be here to help represent the people in town. That's all, that's all.
So do we. And it's real easy to say, but I don't know anybody has a magic wand that's gonna pull out of their rear end.
Who do I go see over there? I'll go over and see him tomorrow. I'll make an appointment, I'll be nice about it. I don't know, somebody's gotta just do something. We're all busy people, but we're all doing public service.
I haven't gone at all yet.
Neither do we. Go ahead.
All right, before we pull the plug on anyone, I mean, I practiced law and.
Thank you, I haven't.
If you, yeah, if you're gonna allege breach, I mean, you gotta build a file.
He said that.
Evidence is cumulative, so start documenting everything, start building the file, okay? Start building the file.
Mm-hmm. Laurie's got all of them.
Homeacy is cheaper than litigation. And if they stop picking up the trash, they're gonna put it on my doorstep with the town hall? We gotta be careful. So you gotta tread carefully, you just can't pick a fight without plan B, all right? You wanna, you know, the ultimate goal is to get the service and rectify things.
Right.
So we don't wanna like shoot first and ask questions later. So if we need a liaison for the trash company, I hope, if that's you, and I'm okay with that, but I just, you know, and this is coming from me, listen folks, I've been toeing that a little bit. Take the high road first, document everything. If you wanna take all the complaint, you wanna be the complaint department on trash in town, I'm happy with you.
Laurie, we have what Laurie's doing.
All right, I'm a trash talking guy myself, so I mean, I'm happy to make a phone call.
Yeah, if it doesn't work, they don't answer the phone.
Well, but the other thing is, you talk to other trash companies and you say, if we're in a jam and over the barrel here, do we have it out? Do we have it out? So what are the other trash companies? We didn't put it out for bid, but you need a plan B before I fire somebody. I think that you've heard the expression, the devil you know is better than the devil you don't know. Sometimes that's true.
Yeah.
Okay, so I might put up with, you know. Not for nothing, they picked my trash up in front of my house. I don't think it's because they know who I am, it's just, I don't know, it's just, it's a circle, there's only three houses on it and you can't miss it.
I got the same situation, but they missed it.
So maybe the trash is behind a tree or up on the sidewalk or behind a bush, I don't know. But you have to document things, the devil's in the detail. Are they missing a root? Are they missing the same people over and over again because the barrels are on the other side of the sidewalk behind the spruce tree? You know, I put them out in the street, I'm on a little dead end circle, cul-de-sac call or whatever. I just, right on a street, you know, you gotta, you drive into them, you know? So, you know, I don't know. But document, if you're willing to do it, you can.
Laurie already has documented all that.
Well, I've heard it, but, you know, I'd like to see the list, who they are. We get that list, if there's five complaints, then there's five complaints. It'd be easy to rectify.
It needs to be quick, it needs to be done quickly.
No, I wanna quantify it, before I go on World War III with a trash company.
I'm not going on World War III, I'm just gonna tell somebody they're not doing their job that they were contracted to do, that's all.
How many is it, is it?
I don't know, but I probably got three emails at least, not more from Laurie today.
And I respect you, sir, I appreciate you being a write-in, appreciate your time, you know, I was a write-in.
I appreciate yours too.
I got 109 votes, how many did you get, write-in?
I didn't even count, I don't know, I got enough.
But anyways, so if you quantify it, you get the list of the people, then we have something concrete, we have evidence, and we can present that to Waste Management and say, listen, fisher caught bait, folks. You have to give notice, you gotta give notice to people, all right? So you say, we give you a reason, next time you pick up the trash, we wanna hit these and we'll monitor it, see if they, see if they mitigate damages. So you gotta give them a chance to go first. But if it's just an illusory or an abstract, you know, we're getting complaints you're not picking the trash up. I wanna make it concrete, I wanna list the who's.
I'll get that for you.
Hit the list and the next week, we'll use that as a litmus test.
All right.
All right, test run like the ballpark here.
I wanna help them, there's just two or three of them there.
So everyone knows less than if it's okay with the board, I'm not the boss here, but I'm just one of five. I'm 20% boss, I guess, right, one-fifth, .20. But anyways, if you wanna be the customer service rep here, fine. Everybody call you, give them your email if you wanna disclose it.
Well, no, Laurie already does that. They call Laurie, but what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna get you a list of the last, say, 30 days. I'll get you a list of the last 30 days of the people that haven't gotten their trash picked up. And then you'll see how severe it is.
Mr. Chair, is there a, 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 a person, who's the agent for the trash company? Can one of us make a phone call and say, we're getting complaints? Can you do the best next week or this week to pick up all the trash? We're gonna monitor it, come up with a list of who got skipped.
Yeah, let's get.
And we'll get back to them.
We'll get that, we'll get that person's name and phone number from Laurie and we'll, we'll have Catherine get it out to all the board members. Hold on, Kathy, one second.
Mr. Chair, well, let them know we're monitoring the situation, we're gonna accumulate the.
Kathy, go ahead.
List of people.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So one of the, the problem, as I understand it, is that it's a certain section. It's the Wednesday day on the route is too long and the trash trucks are filling up. And we also did not realize till we saw the current contract that the current contract allows for four trash barrels per household, which is unheard of in today. And everybody does the two barrels and unlimited recycling. So, you know, we do wanna get this. I think what Selectman McDonnell proposed would actually work quite well because if, instead of just Laurie, I know, forwards me the complaints she gets, but if you could start to document, if she could forward to you and you could document the roads, the actual streets and the number, and if we can get our hands on that, if she can even go back, I can get you the name of the guy that you can talk to directly, who we're working with the contract on, and you can tell him, if there's a repeat household, and I think there might be a few. It might not be that many, but if we could get that addressed right now, I'm with you on that. There's nothing more frustrating. I'm fortunately on the Monday route, which is golden right now, I guess. And it depends, if you're on the Thursday to Friday route, and especially the Friday, because then you're waiting till Monday if they come back again. And that's maybe part of the problem. So all of these things, if we could get them documented, while we're looking at the contract's gonna come back to us to look for our attorney to review it. If we need to put anything more in the contract, that would be your chance. If you can get, if you can even go back with Laurie backwards and document.
Oh, I will, I will.
That would be like so much help to us, that would be amazing.
Thank you. A lot of companies I've done business with in the past do not wanna admit they have a problem. I did a lot of business with, I won't even name them.
No, this company has admitted they have a problem, they have to redo the whole.
They don't admit their problems.
No, they did.
Oh, they do?
Yes, they do.
How many trucks they have doing our town in a week?
Well, that's it, he said he needs to put two trucks on Fridays. Now, I don't know if that's happened yet or not, because this is what I've heard.
Another thing I wanna state, at my house, I have four barrels.
Yep.
Trash, and I probably have three barrels of recycling. So what am I gonna do if I have to go to bags, like my poor mother does in very much?
Well, because the cost.
Where's the other two barrels of trash and where's the two barrels of recycling gonna go?
Jim or Jimmy, Jimmy, what do you prefer?
Jim's good.
Good, okay, so in review.
You can't take that away from me.
We're not taking away, you can still throw out your trash, you're going to have to purchase.
They're not gonna take four when I have four out there.
They're gonna take the bags, because here's the, I'm not, can I explain, please?
It's a bad idea.
Okay, but can I explain, please? Can I explain, please, thank you.
I already buy bags, they're in the barrel.
Okay, you can put them in the barrel. But the point is that when we reviewed the contract cost over the past year, the tonnage goes up, all right? So we asked the contractor, okay, our costs are going through the ceiling on trash. It's becoming one of the most, it's becoming a very expensive part of our budget and we're trying to manage the costs while allowing people to throw out what they need to throw out. Now, I personally have seen people throwing things out where their trash can is piled up this high.
That's me sometimes when they don't pick it up.
No, no, it was piled on top of the can.
Yeah, me too, me too, I have to, because they don't pick it up.
I feel like we all have to start to take responsibility because not every taxpayer should pay for somebody who's throwing out four barrels. You might need to pay a little bit more because the.
I'm still paying for the school system, I don't have any kids in the school system, so that's a kinda like a weak argument, in my opinion.
By law, we're supposed to be recycling.
I do, three barrels a week.
Okay, but we're just trying to encourage more of that, less trash, and we're gonna see how that goes. If it doesn't work, it can be reevaluated.
You can't force people to do it, though.
But other towns have done this, they don't have four barrels in other towns, we're like the only one.
I don't know how I'm not gonna have four barrels.
I don't either, but.
What am I supposed to do?
Then you purchase the bags.
Bag, there already is a bag inside my barrel that I bought at BJ's.
Well, I suppose if the bag.
I don't know why I have to come down to town hall to buy trash bags.
Because we're not gonna allow four barrels.
Well, then you should've gone to another company that would've allowed us to get rid of our trash and pick up our trash when it's out there.
But then everybody, everybody is subsidizing you on four barrels, that's not really fair.
Yeah, but I'm subsidizing other people that have kids in school with my taxes.
Trash is becoming a very expensive part of the budget.
Yeah, well, so is education, education's a lot more expensive than trash.
Well, I guess we agree to disagree on the trash.
Yeah, we probably are, but I want my trash to get taken care of. And what you're negotiating with in the new contract is not gonna serve the town's needs.
From my observation, driving around, there's not that many homes with four barrels out.
All right.
Yeah, yeah. Sorry, but I do appreciate you stepping forward and I think if you can.
Yeah, I will, I will continue. You're gonna be stuck with me for three years.
I'm kinda glad, I mean, I think that if you document that route and we can show him, because he's saying.
I actually feel that you guys are already aware of this.
I, I know the days that it's happening on.
You all are aware of this problem.
Right, and I'm with you, I don't know why he hasn't already made the correction.
Right.
So that's why I'm looking for the documentation.
You'll have it, you'll have it.
That'd be great.
I'll get it from Laurie, I'm sure she has it all in her emails. Thank you all for doing what you all do too, I appreciate all what you guys do too.
Well, thank you for.
And thank you, and thank you for stepping up to help us. Oh, Dan, I'm sorry, are you indicated?
I had one more thing, I'll keep it short and sweet. Following up and to your point about why wasn't it put out to bid, okay? Water over the dam, under the bridge, you know? I'm new to the board, it's just, here we are now, it's just tough to be Monday morning quarterback on what.
Mm-hmm, they should've done Sunday.
What happened and didn't happen during the pandemic, so, you know. So, you know, can't be the excuse for everything. But you know what? We're here today, so let's, next play. Here's a question I have. I'm a lawyer, but I'm not a municipal lawyer. Learning as I go. But it's a question, if the board agrees with me on this, maybe the chairman can ask the question. But is it possible to go out for bid on a substituted contract so that we could possibly negotiate alternative trash pickup contracts in the event that this one is, in fact, a breach? You know, but, you know, we have an existing contract and act in good faith. And, you know, if something's wrong, I think we let them mitigate, you know, certainly.
Well, I wouldn't want to use the strong word as breach.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
They're not, they're not, well, maybe breach and fulfill the same thing.
Whether or not it's material or immaterial. It's material if the trash is still there on Thursday, if you get a Wednesday pickup.
That's all. That's all.
So I don't know if maybe that's not the here and now. But, you know, if this isn't rectified, I mean, we got Plan B.
If it's not rectified.
We got Plan B, then we can pursue that potentially.
Why don't we seek advice from town council?
Food for thought, you know, food for thought. Can we, is it legal within Mass General laws to put it out to bid, so to speak? And everything that entails on a.
Maybe we'll straighten them out when they realize we're doing that.
On a substituted contract.
All right. We'll, will, will, does anybody else? I think we beat that to death, too. Jimmy, thank you for.
No, thank you all, too.
Thank you for stepping up, and we'll get that, we'll get that.
I'll get you what you wanted. You ask me for something, I'll get it for you. Thank you all.
We'll get that phone number for you, too.
Okay, thank you.
Although I think you have it, don't you? They're just not answering.
Well, Laurie's gonna have it. I don't know if it does any good, but I'll try it.
Okay, next, summer program finalization, use of the Bagnell School. Do we know when this, when it's gonna start? Catherine, do you know that?
I think it starts next week.
Oh.
There was a problem with being able to use the inside of the school. But I don't have any more information on that besides.
They're not gonna be allowed to use the inside?
That's what I heard.
I thought that was.
Maybe because of the storage of all the desks in the gymnasium. All the schools did the same thing. We moved all those cafeteria tables.
So I would think that we could just take a vote. The Bagnell School is owned by the town of Groveland. I think we need to just take a vote that, to let them use the Bagnell School for the summer program.
So I'll make a motion?
Anybody's got the bill? Did you have something on that?
No, other than, as far as I know, the superintendent directed all the schools to prepare to return to normal in the fall. So these classrooms and cafeterias and things, gymnasiums shouldn't be cluttered anymore. All reasonable effort should be made today to return the classes and the schoolrooms back to normal in preparation of return to normal fall school opening. So I don't know why there was, they're holding off on that if it hasn't happened already.
I don't have the answer to that either.
Do we, do we need to vote?
Yeah, I think we just need to vote to allow the summer program to use the Bagnell School.
So I make a motion to allow the Groveland Summer Program to use the Bagnell School.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? None. Take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, five zero. Next, annual appointment of town employees. And then after that, we have the annual appointment of committees and boards. So one of these sheets, we have the town employees.
Oh, we do? I didn't see it. Do we have a sheet? Oh, it's a big, long one. I didn't see. Uh-huh, thank you. Uh-huh. It is a big, long one. Thank you. Do you need just one motion?
Some of these we already did.
I was looking for, this is all the committees.
Let's take the, let's take the police department first. I think we got a separate sheet on that. Recommendation from the police chief. I respectfully request that you accept my recommendation to appoint the following individuals in the indicated positions effective July 1st, 2021, through June 30th, 2022. We have a sergeant, we have Eric B. Gorski. And a promotion, Detective Steve Perone to sergeant. Want to do all of them at the same time?
Yeah.
Full-time police officers, Christopher A. Erzos, Adam R. Sanborn, Christopher Latalian, Joseph McMahons. Reserve police officers, Edward Fornia, Michael Fornesi, Stephen Sergeant, Garrett Greer, Joel Hernandez, Henriquez, Brett Moya, Kyle Elato, and Daniel R. McDonald. Relation to you, Dan?
No.
In addition, I respectfully request that you accept my recommendation to appoint the following individuals in the indicated position for the time periods as noted. Lieutenant Dwight McDonald, effective July 1st, 2021, through his retirement date of July 31st, 2021. Reserve patrol officers, reserve dispatcher, lockup keeper. Dwight McDonald, August 1st, 2021, through June 30th, 2022. Sergeant Heather Riley, effective July 1st, 2021, through July 31st, 2021. Lieutenant Heather Riley, August 1st, 2021, through June 30th, 2022. That's a promotion from sergeant to lieutenant effective August 1st, when Dwight McDonald retires. Full-time police officers, Joshua A. Sendoni, July 1st, 2021, through July 31st, 2021. And promotion to sergeant effective August 1st for Joshua Sendoni, through June 30th, 2022. Full-time dispatcher, lockup keeper, Cynthia L. Batista, Edward L. Fornia, Stephen M. Sergeant, and Catherine F. Trudell. Reserve dispatcher, lockup keeper, Deborah Muniz, Brett Moya, Kyle Elato, Barbara Bilow. Annual control officer, Stephen Sergeant, harbor master, Daniel, Michael J. Vets, lockup keeper, Robert J. Ramondi, and Nicholas R. C. Tellos. And constables, Edward W. Reed, and Carlos Huzak.
So moved?
Don't move. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, thank you. Any further discussion? I just think we ought to congratulate those that are being promoted. And again, thank Dwight McDonald for his service, and wish him luck in his retirement. Any other comments? None. Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you. And these board of registrars and the, the annual board of selectmen, the board of registrars and the town clerk's office requests the reappointment of Edward Reed and Dave Tuttle as election constables for the town of Groveland. We have a motion?
Motion for reappointment of Edward Reed and Dave Tuttle as election constables for the town of Groveland.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? None. All in favor? Unanimous, five zero. Let's see, on this list, what else we got for town employees?
Sam Joslin's?
Hmm?
This one from Sam Joslin?
Uh, yeah, we.
Oh, we did.
We already.
Oh, yeah.
I don't think we did Sam, though, but we can do him. No, we had.
That's the transfer.
We make a motion for Sam Joslin as building inspector?
I'll make a motion to appoint Sam Joslin as our building inspector.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Somewhere it's on here.
Do you request additional appointments?
Yeah, we already, we did that.
You said we already did.
We did that earlier.
Yeah, there were four of them. We did at the beginning.
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
On the budget, if I recall, that was, position was pumped up, I think ten thousand dollars.
Yes.
Was there a reason for that? I wasn't here for that. It's, what, mathematically, a twenty-five percent pay raise? Well, discussions about tasks and other positions, and I was in for it. So I'm just curious as to why the board moved that.
Bill?
I'll take on some of it. Some of it is increased duties responsibilities. Others is to keep him competitive with other towns around us. And third is, he has, he is basically offsetting most, if not all, of his increase with increases in his fee structure, which we approved, which brings in a considerable amount of money, because, as he noted, we've been way behind the times as far as fee structures for permits go in this town.
And that's a shared position. How many hours is that?
Uh, I think he's here twenty-four, and he's in West Newbury, twenty or eighteen, something like that. It's a shared position between the two towns.
Yeah, I just wondered.
I'm not sure how many.
Mathematically, if you, is it half and half between the two towns? And if you double it, is that a hundred and twenty thousand dollar area job?
I think it's a little more than half us.
Okay, just asking.
Do we have a list of the town employees?
I'm just going through this and, I'm just going through this and looking up the town employees. And then we'll, we'll read those. Sam Joslin, ADA coordinator, administrative coordinator for the Board of Selectmen, Catherine Warden, assessing manager, Julie Yebba, assistant treasurer, collector, Michelle Begon, building inspector, Sam Joslin, town clerk, burial agent, Elizabeth Kunniff.
Conservation agent.
Uh, did I miss that one?
Rosemary.
Uh, yeah.
Easie.
She's not conservation anymore.
I didn't see that.
Oh, that's right. She's our, she's our nurse now. She's our health agent.
I didn't see that on here.
She's our, health agent.
The facilities, Steve McPherson, and the backup on-call custodian, Amy Carey, fire chief, Robert Valentine, also the fire chief as forest fire warden, Sam Joslin, floodplain administrator, Rennie Carroll, highway superintendent, tax, tax office clerk, Michelle Begon, town accountant, Alan Petrello, town council, KP Law, town planner, Rebecca Alderman. And please tell me if I missed anybody.
Water and Sewer.
Oh, yeah, Water and Sewer. Heather Torres, office manager, part-time clerk, Mailer Lees, and Water and Sewer Department head, Colin Stokes. Is there anybody that I missed as we went down there?
Police chief, you did? Police chief?
Police chief is on a contract.
Okay.
Fire chief is on a contract.
Oh, that's true, yeah, okay. We got Rebecca.
Uh, Dan, go ahead.
Are these all annual appointments? Are these at-will employees? Is that how this works?
Yes, it is. Yes, it is. They're all annual. All right, now, we want to, do we, somebody may make a motion in a second? Maybe they did. I missed it.
I'll make a motion to approve the list as read out of town employees.
I'll second it.
Second. Motion made in second. Any further discussion? None. All in favor? Unanimous, five zero. Now, the boards and committees. Annual boards and committees. Affordable Housing Committee, it looks like that's five positions, all vacant. Board of registrars. It says a three-year term. Susan D'Angelo, Catherine Greeney, and one vacant. I got a question on the cable TV advisory board. I thought last year we didn't appoint anybody.
I agree with you. I thought we didn't.
The only one that I remember is Seth Graham, was appointed during the year, but he was the only one. So he couldn't sit. Catherine, did you get any response from Beth Rose and Tracy Guilford?
I did not.
Did not? Okay. How about Seth Graham?
Nope.
Maybe we could get something out to them. We can take it up at another time. Community Persevation Committee, vacant for affordable housing. There's nobody. Board of Selectmen's appointment, Ed Watson, Jim Scanlon, Kathy Prunier, Claire Walsh, Michael Miga, Walter Sorensen. Recreation Committee, there's somebody vacant on there, and Mike Dempsey. And those are all three-year appointments. Term, oh, mine expired six-thirty of twenty-one, with no objections. If, I'll stay on there for another, another year. If any, nobody, no objections.
Opposed.
Hmm? Okay.
What's wrong?
Excuse me, edit that one year or three years?
No, they're all three years.
Okay, so another term. Okay.
Just kidding, jammer.
And Mike, you want to step up and serve another three years? Okay, you're in. Conservation Commission, Stephanie, is it Stephanie Botlet? Bill Fomosi, Mike Dempsey, Thomas Schaefer, Terry Grimm, Fred O'Connell, John Gabber, they're doing pretty good. And Rosemary DeSeal. Those are all three-year appointments, except for Rosemary. So, what else said on that? Council on Aging.
Was there a vote on that?
We haven't voted yet.
No, we'll just read them off, and we'll vote on them afterwards. Catherine Easie, Council on Aging, that's a three-year term. Frank Sadowski, he's up this year, so that's another three-year term. Laurie Pulaski, Dorothy DeChiro, and Anita Wright. And some of those are still in effect for another year, or the three-year term. Oh, I missed, I missed a full-time employee on here. Rebecca Alderman to Murrage Valley Planning Commission, are no alternate. Open Space and Trails Committee, Mike Davis, Michael Codero, Jennifer Cardiant, Jason Navies, Chris Soret. Parking clerk was our former finance director. I know Catherine's been doing those duties as a parking clerk, so we'll put her in there. Personnel Advisory Board, they're all vacant. Planning Board member, Brad Legos. Planning Board member, James DeJigus. Am I pronouncing that correctly? What is it?
These are elected, though.
You don't know either.
Those are elected, Mr. Chairman?
These are elected. We don't have to vote.
What's that again?
These are elected, I believe, planning board. So we don't have to vote that list.
We don't need to do the police chief. Recreation, two vacancies. Recreation, recreation auxiliary member, two vacancies. Recreation Committee, Catherine Ulette, Karen LaBelle, Bill O'Neill, Dan Stewart, and three vacancies there. The right-to-know officer, that's vacant, but we'll, that's always the fire chief. We'll stick the fire chief with that. Are you, are you writing these down? Okay, thank you. Stormwater Management, there's three vacancies. Superintendent of Insect Pest Control, that's an annual appointment. That should be the Highway Superintendent.
Okay. That makes sense.
Why, did you have somebody?
No, I just had never, I don't know if I've seen. No, I just had never, I don't know if I've seen that. Maybe I just never remembered it.
Town Government Study Committee, Joe Demore, Paula Burke, Betty Gorsky, John Christopher, Andrew Cox, John Osborne, Mike Dempsey. Uh, Veterans Agent, Mike Ingham. Rebecca, there's another one I missed you on earlier. Zoning Administrator.
Uh, no.
No, you're not.
The Town Planner and Zoning Administrator positions no longer exist, and now there's only a director position.
Okay, we'll take that out. Uh, Zoning Board of Appeals, Jason Norman. Yeah, I didn't know there were so many. They would have someone else do it. Cultural Committee, Marguerite Foley, Janet Nolan, Janice DeWolf, Susan D'Angelo, and Jane Jennings. Now, here's another one I missed was, uh, Rennie Caro, Earth Removal Enforcement Officer, Site Inspector. Dan, you had a question?
No, just wiping my mouth, sorry.
Oh, okay.
We're gonna vote on these in segments or by committee?
No, we'll, we'll do them all unless somebody has an objection to any. Elm Square Committee, Mike Dempsey, Betty Gorsky, Greg Stock Jr., Kathy Castrenellis, Brian Cornell, and Lee Yang, and Jonah Vahuli Davis. Finance Board. We got one vacancy. Ruth Revad, no, we got two vacancies. Ruth Revad, Teresa Dunn, Melissa Baker, Sarah McGrath, Jim Scanlon, we got a letter of, uh, from Jim, he'd like to get back on, and Susan Yaskel, alternate member, and one alternate member vacant.
So are we adding James Scanlon to this?
Jim Scanlon. He, uh, did you get the, uh, uh, email that he would like to, uh?
I just, why don't we just write him in the list then?
Get back on.
Yeah.
On Council on Aging, there was two replacements, Marie Waller and Irene Thomas, that are gonna be replacing the two coming off.
Was that elected, though?
Okay, let me, uh, uh, let me go back.
I'll look at the election.
Let me go back to that. Yeah, we, oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, we did have.
No, they're appointed. Library's elected.
Yeah, who's coming off?
Um, the ones coming off are Frank and Laurel.
Frank?
Frank and Laurel.
Frank and Laurel.
To be replaced with Marie Waller and Irene Thomas.
Okay, uh, replacing Frank Sadowski and Laurie Pulaski, who have reached their maximum of three, uh. Yeah, uh, now they're, they're, I think they're restricted to two, three terms.
Yes.
And we have Marie Walker and Irene Thomas that, uh, would like to get on, and that was Catherine Elise, the Member of the Council on Aging requesting them. So, thank you for pointing that out. Okay, um.
Groveland Day Committee? Did you do Groveland Day Committee? You did finance?
Haven't done Groveland Day Committee. We, I stopped at the Finance Board. Finance Director, none. Groveland Day Committee, Leah Bates, Lisa Cunningham, Elizabeth Zimmerman, Beth Greenhagen, Jill Crissack, Mike Porter, and we got three vacancies. Historical Commission, um, we have one vacancy. Linda Freel, Dr. Dale Angelo Hart, Lynn Pappas, and Claire Walsh. And Lynn Pappas's term expires this year. The others haven't expired yet.
The zoning Board of Appeals?
Uh, Zoning Board of Appeals, I already did, uh, Jason Norman. Oh, you know, I must have jumped ahead on the page. Zoning Board of Appeals, Matthew Guy, John Stokes, Chris Goodwin, and a vacancy, one vacancy, and two alternates are vacant. Oh, another one I missed was John, uh, Sam Jocelyn, Zoning Enforcement Officer. That's also an annual appointment. Any questions on any of those? Any, um?
So, can I make, should I make a motion?
Yeah, we need a motion.
A motion to approve the list as read and amended at this time tonight?
Second.
Motion made in seconded. Any further discussion?
Yes.
Dan?
We vote in blocks of committees.
I'm sorry, can we vote in block of what?
Committees.
Committees?
Well, go ahead and make a motion.
You want me to read that off again? The committee?
Well, I have a couple of oppositions, though.
Okay.
I don't want to oppose the whole list.
All right, uh.
Conservation and Finance, I have some opposition. The other ones, um.
All right, so can we vote? It will exclude Conservation and Finance and?
Conservation and Finance.
I'll exclude, my friendly amendment to exclude those, can we vote? Move favorable on the rest?
Okay, anybody have any other question on that? None. Is there a second on that?
I'll second it.
Second. All in favor of the appointments other than Conservation and Finance?
No further discussion?
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
I have a hard time approving any of this list. Did, do we have letters from these folks that are requesting to be put back on these committees? I've got names that I know don't belong here. Kevin Pecos is here.
We didn't mention him.
We didn't, we just, I said as read.
But i- is this, is this list succinct, is is my question? Because I see a lot of the names that I know don't belong here, and I wonder, and I'm asking, did all these people, um, request to be re-upped? Or are we making assumptions that aren't valid?
I've got that, Catherine?
I don't have any responses from anyone.
You don't have any responses from anybody? Did you send out emails to them?
Not to everyone. I don't have emails for everyone. I talked about it with Selectman Castrenellis, and she said that we should appoint people and have them come back to us and say they don't want to be appointed.
They just won't get sworn in, yeah, if I could. So I'm just thinking that coming out of this pandemic and with a short staff here as it is, to go through the process, appoint them, give a period of time for them to come and get sworn in. If they don't get sworn in, then we list it as a vacant position. They're not on the board until they're sworn in. It just, just coming out of this pandemic, I just figured that we just wait a little bit and see. I mean, we're televising this, so people are maybe hearing their names, so maybe they'll be calling up and saying, I don't want to do that anymore. I don't know. Hopefully, everybody will come out from their homes and still do what they were doing before. I mean, I recognize a lot of names on the list, a few names I don't know, but I don't recognize any name that I know for sure has moved or doesn't want to do the task. But then I haven't tried to contact them either. So I was thinking we wait, see if they come down and get sworn in. If they don't, then we come back to the list and see. Just keep track of who doesn't get sworn in.
Do you, do you want to do that, Bill, or do you want to do a, wait until we get responses from everybody?
Well, uh, I guess my main concern is we're going to approve everyone here, or the majority. We're gonna wait for them to tell us they don't want to be involved, and then we gotta hope to find out soon enough. I, I, I worry that we're not gonna find out that these people don't want to be involved in a timely manner. We're gonna have a ton of vacancies that we don't really know about. And it's gonna make our life more difficult, but I'm just one person.
I was gonna say, Bill, if, if you think of it this way, that there's, as Chairman Watson read, there's plenty of vacancies. So we can already start advertising the vacancies in our meetings and say, wait till the end of July, and highlight whoever did not get sworn in. And that gives a much shorter list for the Administrative Coordinator to follow up on. That was my only thought, trying to give him, trying to give her a short list. Because other years, in a good year, we still spend two or three meetings on this list when we have full staff. And I'm just trying to make it a little bit simpler at this moment in time. I understand your concerns. They're completely valid.
What's the wishes? Dan, you had something?
I was just thinking, in, in the past, unless somebody expressed, you know, a resignation, they'd get re-upped. I mean, if I'm wrong on that, but I think that's how it was done. And they have to get sworn in within a certain period of time. And certainly on the next meeting, you'll find out if they're in or out, if they don't get sworn in, or, um, these boards lack quorums, so I think an email, you've been appointed. We'll see the, go see the Town Clerk within, what, two days or something?
She send an email or does she send a letter to of appointment?
I send out a letter, like a physical letter.
So, I think you get an answer within, what's the statutory period on the, before the next meeting, they have to get sworn in. I don't think it's two days. It's just, but if the meeting is on next week, I mean, you have to get sworn in before next week. So time is kind of critical, and otherwise you can't vote and participate. So it's, you'll find out before the next meeting. But, uh, I see his point. It'd be nice if people would come before and say, here I am, I'd like to re-up, and this is what I want to do for the town, and, you know, forge forward, but, uh, I don't know. I think, uh, I think we just proceed and with the nominations, a thumbs up, a thumbs down, and, uh, we'll get a response.
Bill?
I see what you're saying, though, Bill. I do.
Yeah, well, just to your point.
How, though?
If they don't have enough members to have a quorum to have a meeting, we'll never know that they didn't have a meeting.
Yeah, that's point. If no one shows up, then well, it's silence, it'd be crickets, you know, so.
The Town Clerk would notify us that, uh.
No one gets sworn in.
Who wasn't sworn in.
It's a no-show.
Well.
Yeah, she could check off the list.
Yeah, but if they don't have to get sworn in until they have a meeting?
No, they don't. They've got a certain period of time to get sworn in.
Does she track the postings on the, on the public notices? So, I mean, you see a public notice posted, you gotta have members, so, I mean, it'll, it'll cycle through.
You have the answer to the question?
I do have the answer to the question, so I'm the chair of the Groveland Day Committee.
Well, come up to the mic.
Yay.
Well, you just looked it up, didn't you?
A live person.
So you're the chair of, I'm the chair of the Groveland Day Committee, that you're attempting to reappoint me to, which is perfect, and thank you very much. But, um, they will not post an agenda unless every, unless she knows that enough people have been sworn in to have a quorum, because it's stopped me in the past, and I've had to have everyone rush down here to get sworn in. So it will stop its own problem, because they'll never be able to have a meeting. And if they realize they don't have enough people to have a quorum, then they're gonna have to come to you anyway. So they can't go and try to have a meeting without realizing that they don't have enough members to have a meeting. Because she just won't post your agenda, um, because she's keeping track of that as it goes. So, um, so that's how it's worked in the past, I imagine. That's how she's continuing to operate.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, you did, you did all right. I saw you with the phone. I thought you might have looked something up.
It's only nine, it's only nine o'clock. We got five more hours.
Dan.
Dan said it would wait until?
You're snoring my pillow.
Say two in the morning, up three. We need coffee.
No, do, do, we can wrap this up.
We'll go for coffee.
All right, what's the wishes?
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Move the issue.
Move the question. All right, so we're voting on, um, appointments of, uh, the town boards other than Conservation and Finance.
Yes.
All right, all in favor? Opposed? Four, one. Four in favor, one opposed.
Nothing personal.
Excuse me?
Okay.
What's that, Bill?
Nothing.
So.
Okay, there was a question on Finance.
On Conservation, first, alphabetically.
Well, I just went to Finance because it's on the, my first page here. Dan, uh, you had something on Finance.
Finance?
Finance, Finance Board.
Finance Board, yes. Ruth. Opposed.
Call for the vote on the Finance Board. I'm favorable on all the names as read. Let's, let's only get a second and open it for discussion.
Second.
Okay.
Thank you. Now you can discuss.
Motion in a second on, um, the Finance Board.
To approve, prove.
She's not up for appointment.
Oh, shit. Selectman McDonald, she's not up for reappointment.
Read the name. Yeah, she's on there till, uh, her term of office is up for June thirtieth, twenty-three.
You bamboozled me.
It was easy.
No discussion then, I guess, right?
I finally made a joke.
Okay, all in favor of Finance Board? Unanimous, five zero.
Now we're back to Conservation.
Yeah, I gotta find that. Conservation Commission.
My issue?
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the Conservation Commission members who are up for reappointment as read.
Is there a second on that?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? None. Okay, we'll, uh, in favor of those on the Finance Board that are up for, uh?
Finance, Conservation, what are you talking about?
Oh, oh, go ahead.
What, which board are we talking about?
Conservation.
Commission.
I oppose them all. I oppose them all.
Oppose them all?
Yes.
You can't oppose the ones that are, that are through twenty-two and twenty-three.
I understand that. I thought we're only, I thought we're only voting on the ones that are lapses.
Tom Schaefer, Mike Dempsey, Terry Grimm, Roseme, Rosemary DeSeal, she's the Conservation Agent, but she's up for one-year appointment. You're opposing everybody?
Yes.
She's not, Rosemary is not the Conservation Agent.
Just, yeah, add my name to that list.
All in favor of Conservation? Four opposed, one. Thank you. All right, we got through that. That was a sure. VZ Park Liquor License Insurance and Benefits. Mike, you're up. Do you also want to do, Mike, we, we need to redo this liquor license for, uh?
London? Erica London?
Yes, it is. That's not Monday, though.
What's that?
The twenty-eighth is Monday, isn't it? This is Saturday, the twenty-sixth.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes, for Saturday.
Yeah. Yeah, I guess there was a change in the time on the, on the original license?
Yes, they added an extra hour, and it got missed on the original rental agreement, but everything else is, is in line.
It was a typo originally.
So did we get that straight now?
So.
They're all set?
Not yet. They're checking.
All right.
I think they're reading your plan. Looks like they're reading your plan.
So, last time that we met, briefly talked to you about the VZ liquor license idea. So, we put this together, Vanessa and I, we've been working on this for a couple of years. Tonight, we are not looking to ta, for you to take any action. We're not applying for a liquor license. We wanted to provide that information to you for a future request. At this time, we don't know exactly when that will be. But, um, the main reason, I think, why we wanted to talk about it, certainly Vanessa's here, she can answer any questions that you might have. But the main reason why we wanted to. that you might have. But the main reason why we wanted to bring that up tonight is to be able to demonstrate the increase in revenue that we plan on getting by having a liquor license. And that will support our budget for fiscal year '22, and lead into our final discussion on the benefits issue that needs to be resolved. So if you've got any questions on the liquor license, otherwise we'll, I'll pass out another piece of paper on the revenue.
Any questions for Mike? You good, Dan?
Yeah, you were here not too long ago, I think. If the liquor license is given to an independent, would we fee share, or would the prices be set so that, you know, we have some level of input into, you know, whether or not they're serving the, you know, the customers, or, you know, I mean, for instance, I'm not gonna be ludicrous and take it to the extreme. I mean, could they charge eight dollars a beer or something? I mean, is there something negotiated in the contract where there's a reasonable, we get the menu and a fee structure, and so that we know that you're properly serving the patrons? What's involved in that? Is that the next?
Yes.
Segway to this? That's, this is preliminary, and that's next, the nitty-gritty?
Yes.
This is just basic liability coverage, what would happen, and then you negotiate that, it's not?
Yeah. I mean, we're working with the Friends of VZ, who would be the liquor license holder. So they're an independent 501(c)(3) organization, so they would hold the liquor license. So they're gonna work with us, because they donate most of their funds back to the park anyway, so.
I guess my concern is that, do they kind of like have a monopoly, and they can do whatever they want? I mean, there's gonna be.
No.
Parameters on what they, what they do and can't do, and what they can charge, and what they can't charge. And would we share in that in any way, or it'd be like a price for the license? Some towns will sell a license for a thousand bucks or something, or X.
Oh, okay, I see what you're saying.
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, because I know in Boston, to get a liquor license, it's really expensive.
Like I know one case, right? The city of Salem has a municipal golf course, and there's a, there's a vendor that has a full liquor license at the golf course. And I believe that's about a thousand bucks a year to renew that. And then that proprietor just runs the business.
Right.
Okay? So would it be similar to that, or VZ Park would benefit and get 10% of the sales, or 5%, or a commission? Is there any thought there to raise some revenues, or just be a flat fee? So I'm just brainstorming, I wanna know what you're doing, and how?
We're gonna get 80% of the revenue.
80% of the top line.
Of the net, of the net.
Oh, of the bottom line?
Yeah.
So how do you know they won't pay it out all in payroll, and you get zero? I mean, that's, that's what I would do if I owned a business. I'd just give myself a fat pay raise, and the bottom line, it'd be zero.
The Friends of VZ are a volunteer organization, so nobody gets paid.
What about the bartender?
Well, the bartender would be staffing, I mean, that's a separate issue.
That's what I'm saying, you know? Who controls the staffing? So I'm just playing devil's advocate, but you know, if it's on the bottom line, yeah, I'm just gonna expense it out, take a bonus.
Yeah, I mean, well, we'll have to research a little bit more to see exactly what those numbers are.
It's too easy to do. I like the top number better. Give me 5% of the top number, and that's static. I don't care what your bottom line is, it's your problem to control costs.
The way VZ Park is run is not run as a for-profit business. We're doing our best to bring in more income, but it is, you know, community first. And so.
I understand.
This is just a way to continue to bring up that revenue, so that we can continue to renovate all of the proceeds that we, all of the profits that we make go right back into staffing, maintenance, upgrades, you know.
I understand. But whether you're a nonprofit, which I think is a misnomer in many ways, they're tax-exempt organizations, all entities, whether you're for-profit, what your motive is or not.
I have one.
You have to take in more than you pay out, or you cease to exist.
The reason for the Friends of VZ is that we need a separate entity from the Town of Groveland. The Town of Groveland, it sounds like you can't issue yourselves a liquor license.
I don't think we can.
So unless you can issue it to me, I'm the director at VZ Park, and that there was an issue whether we could even do that. So if that's not allowed, then the Friends of VZ is where they step in to be that entity there.
All right. That's my two cents, and whatever that's worth. And my suggestion is you get a cut on the top line, not the bottom. The bottom's, that's what accountants work with. I'm a CPA, and I can get your bottom line to zero if I tell you how to spend the money.
Whatever it is, it'll be on the up and up. Full transparency, that everybody sees our budget anyway.
Thank you.
Yeah, so what, what I just passed out was, again, it's really just for your information, you know, are we projecting, if we actually did this, this is the projection for the VZ Park revenue for fiscal year '22. We need to, in order to meet our budget, we need to be able to raise about $120,000, $126,000. So about half of that would be raised through additional parties, weddings, weekend and weekday events, and liquor sales. So that would enable us to cover our budget. The remainder is raised through rents for long-term tenants. So the second page is the budget, and again, you know, it goes into quite a bit of detail. But just for your further information, home reading, hopefully that will give you some background to the next part of the discussion. So any other questions on the liquor stuff?
Yeah, I think we ought to run that by town council.
Mr. Chairman.
What do I do with it? Over here.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, again, we're not a plot, you know, this is very preliminary. I think that eventually, you know, whether it be in a month or six weeks, when we officially apply, if we officially apply, then we're gonna have to just make sure everything is kosher.
And I understand you're trying to make, trying to make a lot of money there, but I don't think you can use a private security firm as opposed to police detail. I don't think you can do that.
Well, I have, I have spoken to other towns and how they do it, and most other towns don't require businesses to have a detail for one-day permits, which is how we're doing them now. And that makes sense for the bigger parties, but we're just trying to find a solution for those smaller parties, or for those other types of parties that are not, you know, 100 people, where they're drinking four hours, you know, that, that I do think that more security is important. But for your, you know, bridal showers with 30 people, and half of them are grandmas, you know, I just don't know that a police detail is necessary.
Well, you've never seen grandmas drink, have you?
I mean, I, that's true. But I'm just saying that, you know, I don't think we need to treat every single event in the same way. And so this is kind of one of the ways we're looking to see, you know, how we could expand having more events and more types of events, and how we can accommodate and cater to the needs of those types of events as well.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Kathy.
Thank you. So I'm assuming this is a new plan, because the old plan, I remember before the pandemic, I have these vague memories of speaking with both of you. And you were trying for a one-year liquor license, and I believe the town council shot it down, because you didn't have all this other, these, this tips manager and the tips-certified bartender in place.
That was still part of it, but I think a huge part of it was who to issue it to, because when we first came up, it was, could we issue it to us?
Okay, that, okay, so it was still the town. Okay, that was the big issue then? That was it?
Yeah, because we obviously would still have all of those qualifications in place with the tip-certified bartenders and stuff like that.
And this would make it so much simpler for people who are booking a party. Now they don't have to go to us, or to you, for you to come. All those middle steps are eliminated.
Exactly.
No, I get it. I mean, it's worth a shot, I guess, see what they say, you know, work it out, and when it's ready to go, for the attorneys to look at again, let us know. And I think you've, you're trying to come up with some pretty good ideas for use of that place. And I think people will be looking for things to do now that we can be out again.
Absolutely.
Surprise. Great, thank you.
Any other comments?
Yes. Would, you know, my concern is exposure to the town, would the exposure to liability, let's just say there was a, you know, somebody over-served, and there was a, you know, drunken driving situation, vehicular homicide. Would the exposure be to VZ Park, the 501(c)(3)? Or would it be a situation where it'd be jointing several, where the town would be on the hook? Because, and again, I'm believing you're playing for the worst, hope for the best, but you gotta be prudent about it. I don't know that a million dollars' worth of liability coverage is adequate if there was a wrongful death claim. So, and, you know, the courts never go out of business, and they never run out of claims, and it's a law of averages in the world of litigation, and sooner or later, somebody screws up. So if the sky falls, does it fall on VZ Park, 501(c)(3), or does it fall on the town as well? So I want some clarity on that before I vote to approve this, and that might be another follow-up issue with town council. But I'd like to separate the town from that liability and exposure. And if there's any exposure to the town, you know, I think at a minimum, the liability policy would need to be increased.
I mean, I think that's a really good question, which is something that we're also worried about, and which is why having a little bit more control over the alcohol seems to be the way to go. Right now, the person in charge of carrying that insurance is the bartender. You know, they, they put their, the Town of Groveland on as an additional insured on their certificate of liability, so I don't think it would be much different than that.
I just, you know, and follow-up, I mean, you know, risk reward. What do we stand to gain from changing gears on what was done in the past, where you hired?
Well, we could sell it.
Licenses for individual events, and, you know, why couldn't you just, I know that it might be more cumbersome to have multiple license applications come before the board over time, but, I mean, that's what transpired in the past, as far as I know. Had to apply for each individual license, and you could still have a fee sharing or a fee agreement with those bartenders or organizations. Why can't you get the money that way without the VZ Park taking on the added responsibility of being a liquor license holder?
The big difference being is that if we, if we ran the alcohol sales ourselves, we would be getting the alcohol directly from a distributor, and then we would up-charge the costs, so that, you know, there would be some income to be made to make it worth it, you know, to make it.
But I want to compare, you know, what do you anticipate the revenue increase will be changing to this, this method versus the other? Is there a, you know?
That's what's in this, because right now, right now.
Mike, I just.
Yeah, go ahead, sorry.
Zone me in on the line there, on, is it the, just liquor sales? I mean, this is a budget for all of VZ Park. Is there a separate line item for liquor sales? I mean, that's the narrow issue here.
That's on the larger print document, the other, the other one.
Not this one?
No, not the other one.
The one I can't read?
The other one.
I need better glasses. All right, so what am I looking at here? But it's not a two-year comparison. Right? You got, you got tenants, long-term partners, single-use, so liquor sales, okay. So you're anticipating $12,500 in aggregate liquor sales under this method?
Right.
What was it before?
Nothing.
We don't sell it.
It was zero, you benefited and gained absolutely nothing from.
Right.
The party hiring their own independent.
They, they bring in their own alcohol.
Bring your own? BYOB and whatnot?
No, they have to have a bartender.
A gallon of cocoa juice?
It's not BYOB, but I'm saying the party event person brings, they buy the alcohol, so we have no part in it.
As it stands right now, for any event, and that's wedding, bridal shower, baby shower, birthday party, it's about $700 to $1,000 for them to just have the bartender and the detail officer and the permit paid for, and the insurance. So it makes it really expensive for smaller parties. For a wedding, that's not such a big deal. We don't get any benefit from really having alcohol directly, except that people don't want to have a dry wedding. So we lose events because alcohol is so cumbersome. So in that sense, we'll be making more, two ways, in the sense that people will, for smaller parties, would spend less on doing the events. The larger parties would cover more of those costs, and we would also bring in more events that don't book with us, because alcohol is so expensive to do for these smaller events.
Just, you know, you get 25 events here, and you project $12,500. I mean, it seems to me that you could charge the wedding, and the, charge by the head or something, you know? And you can recoup that $12,000 by the number of people. So assuming there were 12,500 people coming, you whack them all a buck. If there were, you know, 500 people, then you divide 12,500 by 500, and you whack them per head.
That's just an estimate. It's, I am hoping that's on the low side.
I'm just looking for alternatives to, you know, I'm thinking to the logical extreme on, is there a risk associated with VZ Park holding a liquor license? And whereas it may not create exposure for the town, and I don't know the answer to that yet, I'd like to get the answer to that, you know? I need to know. But if it exposed that property, which is a kind of, you know, one of many crown jewels in this town, it was paid for with taxpayer money, even though it's 501(c)(3), it is, it's Groveland, it is. It's the, you know, it's, it's part of this town. And so I wouldn't want to jeopardize that, trying to make $12,500 bucks a year. I think it's, I think it's nickel and dime for the amount of exposure. You potentially create exposure of millions of dollars for $12,500 bucks. I'll give you an example. If I were gonna take on a business client, and I was gonna make $12,500, but if I screw up, it could cost me millions, I might say I'll turn down the work. There's easier money to be made, is what I'm telling you. It's easier to make $12,000.
We'll have to see what our first year ends up with, because I actually do think we would do more, we would do better than that. That's just a starting number. I think we would, speaking with other people who've done similar stuff, the event venues, their alcohol sales tends to be a big part of their income. So I think that would be a really, that's our starting point. That's kind of what we're hoping, you know, if the first year, all we do is cover the cost to do it, it'll at least give us some feedback on what to do. If it's not worth it, then we don't continue it. If it is worth it, which I think it'll be better than what's projected, then we have those numbers to work with. But without doing it, at least for a year, we really have no idea.
All right, anybody else?
Yeah, I just feel like we've pushed VZ Park to become self-sustaining. We've said it at town meetings, we've said it, I've been on the Finance Board, and we've pushed and pushed, and they've come up with an idea, and they want to go forward. I think all you're looking for is, are we okay for you to go forward with this, to see if this can be done? I'm, I'm open to new, myself, I'm open to new ideas. The idea that you want to try and do something to become self-sustaining, I'm for that.
Bill, you got anything?
No.
Jason?
Yeah, I think it's a great idea. I mean, I'm not sure that there's gonna be any additional liability to the town, since the Friends of VZ are holding the liquor license versus me holding a single-day liquor license.
Right.
There potentially could be, I mean, ultimately, that'll be for town council to decide, because the Friends of VZ are dedicated just to VZ Park.
Supporting VZ.
So that may play into that. But like I said, I mean, that's for town council to decide on whether or not, and I'm sure that will happen before anything moves forward, so I'm not overly concerned about it. But, I mean, if it works, I think it's extremely exciting, and I would expect to, for you to get a lot more events overall, and as well as reap the benefits of the sales of alcohol. So, yeah, I think that's phenomenal.
And just to say, we are in agreement, too, with the whole liability stuff, you know, we want to make sure everybody is covered. That's, that's why we're putting in our own calls to insurance companies. But the liquor liability is its own insurance that would But the liquor liability is its own insurance that, that would be for the parks. So I think that that's a extra benefit and securing a little bit, a more, a safer way of doing this.
What's the cost of that?
Uh, it's about thirteen hundred to fifteen hundred a year.
Thank you. Anybody else?
No.
So, Mr. Chairman, um, the next thing that I, the, the final thing I wanna talk about is the, the, uh, benefits package for the, um, new position, the environmental program coordinator. Now, I know you, you'd mentioned several times tonight the conservation agent, but you know, at town meeting, we abolished that position. The commission had previously voted to abolish it. And now being under the new, um, department, we're hiring an environmental program coordinator who is paid for, half of their salary is paid for by the, um, the conservation commission fees. The other half is being paid for by the V C revolving fund. So, um, what we found out from the accounting department is that, uh, unfortunately, the, the, uh, revolving account rules from the, um, state law state that whatever percentage of a salary of, of revolving account pays, it also has to pay that percentage of the benefits.
Oh.
So, so that means even though, you know, we all assumed that the town was gonna take on the benefits while we covered the salary, now, you know, V C is gonna have to pay five or six thousand dollars towards the benefits to pay half the benefits potentially that much of whoever gets hired. So, um, Rebecca went around with this quite a bit with the town accountant and tried to find a solution and the best solution that we can suggest is, um, a swap, so to speak, in that we would normally, we normally budgeted six thousand dollars this year, fiscal year twenty-two to pay towards our property and liability insurance. So rather than paying that, we would pay the fifty percent benefits from the revolving account and the town would pay the full, um, six thousand dollars that we would've paid for the, um, liability and property insurance on V C Park. Now, it's not a sustainable solution, but you know, one of the things that needs to be done is an entire insurance review because Maya refuses to, you know, um, refuses to take on V C Park. So we need to go to another vendor. We have to find another vendor for our municipal insurance if they refuse to do it. And I think we would cut the, the price down that we're paying under the V C policy significantly if it was thrown in with everything else. So, so that's what we're asking you to, to approve tonight.
Okay.
Question for Mike?
Yes.
Dan?
Why, is it Mass Insurance, uh, was the acronym, MIA? Is it Mass Insurance, uh, associate? Isn't that the default insurance group in Massachusetts?
It's, it's not the default, right?
Like?
No, I don't think so.
Years ago, I had a house with a flat roof, nobody would touch it. I had to go to the default. I thought it was them.
No, Maya, it's, it's the municipal insurance, but it's just a.
Municipal, okay.
Yeah, it's just a primary, primary company that's used by most towns, but it's not the only one. Because we get our insurance from an entirely different company from, for V C, so.
What is the reason they will not, um, write that coverage? Is it they're worried about drowning because of the water or what's, what is the real issue?
There was a claim, you know, an ice dam claim back in twenty thirteen. And since, you know, two years after that, they decided they weren't gonna cover us anymore.
They put the claim and they drop you. That's what, that's what pretty much all insurance companies do. They just, you know, they like the premiums to build skyscrapers and then once you put the claim in, they, you know, cancel you.
Right.
So, uh, can, can we shop that policy?
Well, we did and the agent that we've got continually every year finds a way to keep the cost down, but I, I think the main problem is that it's one standalone policy, whereas if it were in the whole group of the whole town, just like health insurance, it'd be cheaper.
All right. I have one more question. I don't know if it's off the topic, but, um, you mentioned there was a position change, one was eliminated, a new one. I mean, anyone who's heard me before, I'm cognizant and kinda cautious and I might be even adverse to expansion of the bureaucracy. Is this an increase in payroll, salaries, benefits and pensions? I mean, um, you bring it up that it wasn't anticipated they would share the pension cost or the benefits. I'm assuming the benefits aren't just health ins, health insurance. Can you kind of expand upon that? Extrapolate what, what you meant by not only the position, but the, um, what's involved in the, in the, in the, uh, the benefits?
Okay. So the benefits are the standard town benefits of health insurance, uh, life insurance, uh, you know, coverage under workers' comp, that type of stuff.
Are these full-time positions or, I mean, is this a full-time position?
It's a full-time position, right.
So it would qualify for?
Full-time benefits.
For pension? So whatever that is, the taxpayers will pay after the person retires.
Right.
Um, more questions, more questions I asked, uh.
Well.
So, so for instance, and again, when you hire, but I understand it, correct me if I'm wrong, uh, but it matters who you hire for that position, cause let's just say you need twenty-five or thirty years to retire. If you hire them in year twenty-four or twenty-nine, whatever the cutoff is, and I'm unsure of that, do you own the pension? You know what I'm saying? Do you, you know, that's kinda how it works with schoolteachers. You hire someone and it's not prorated or allocated based upon where they came from. If they had fifteen years in another district, you pick it up?
No, I believe for municipal employees, every town you ever worked for is responsible for their part of it.
That's prorated?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah.
It is actually, uh, we receive a, a prorated.
But not teachers or what teachers too?
For the, I know for municipal employees, we receive a prorated assessment based on our total payroll of current payroll. That's how they assign us the retirement.
But not individually?
No, it's not individual thing, no.
So there is a potential risk there, so I mean.
Yeah, it's, it's an assessment and it's a, they take our payroll, there's a formula, a percentage of that determines our allocation of the retirement costs.
All right. One more question. Will this cost the town a dollar more than what was budgeted at the meeting about a month ago? I mean, what was on there?
No, I mean, we're gonna try to.
Other than a shift, I guess you wanna shift.
Yeah, right. We're trying to do a swap that's fair to both the town and V C revolving fund.
But it's a zero-sum game, five thousand for five thousand, eight thousand for eight X.
We don't know, we don't know exactly what it will be, but.
But it, it's a label.
Yes. Because it depends on, you know, if the person, what insurance they choose and if they're married or not, you know, so.
But, but, uh, actually, I thought of one more question, or one more issue. Depending on what it is, um, benefits like health insurance may escalate at a higher rate than your other costs. So it might not be an even Steven deal on that, if you know what I'm saying.
No, but that's why I say it's not.
I, I'd wanna carry the bag on something that had a low inflationary rate and then you could take the healthcare escalation. How's that?
It's not sustainable because we need to find a, you know, we need to find a longer-term solution.
I understand. So this decision could be made for like a Band-Aid, one, one, one year, subject to review next year to see if we're getting the short end of the, the trade.
Yes.
Beans for a cow?
Yep.
Mr. Chairman?
Thank you.
Anybody else? Kathy?
Yeah, um, I, I think in our discussions that, um, we talked about that the health ins, the casualty insurance, the property and casualty insurance, what the prior, um, finance director was doing, Denise was just like charging you or something, but I don't think we ever really saw that at town meeting. I think we, we appropriated the full amount. So I think, I don't think we have to vote anything. I think we just have not have to bill you whatever the amount was that we were billing. Right, because I don't believe that showed up in the budget detail. We voted, uh, property and casualty insurance, five percent increase. So I'm assuming that we have enough money to pay the whole bill.
Right. It's just that, the only difference is that V C, the proportion of the, you know.
Well, we knew it wasn't gonna work smoothly when we made all those amendments at town meeting. Come on. It was just what it was. So, um, I appreciate how transparent you are about all of this. Thank you. So I feel you're picking up a bigger cost burden, so you just don't want us to bill you your share of prop. Yeah, I think, do we need to even vote on that?
Yeah, I think we should double bill them.
Oh, yeah. Excluding Selectman McDonald, do we need to vote on this?
Always excluding.
That's your preference when this guy books.
Where'd that come from? They wrote me in, I'm here.
Selectman, do you think we need to even vote this? I mean, it's the amount that used to be charged to V C for property and casualty insurance, but that's not a, not voted by town meeting in any shape or form.
I think town meeting just voted the total amount.
It's discretionary what's within that line item, so I don't think we need to vote on the minutia or on the how.
Well, do we need to send a letter to the accountant not to charge you? I mean, was she looking for something?
Well, yeah, usually, you know, it was either, it was usually between Denise and myself or Ellen and myself as to what we get charged.
So do we need a letter or just a letter?
Yeah, that probably would help.
I'll make a motion that, uh, draft a letter to, uh, the accountant and copy Mike Dempsey and tell him that we've agreed not to bill V C Park for their share of property and casualty insurance. Is that?
For fiscal year twenty-two.
For fiscal year twenty-two, that's right, not forever.
Uh, is it second or not?
I second it.
Second. Any further discussion?
Yes.
Uh, good, Dan, go ahead.
Would it be cleaner just to get a credit for a certain amount of money or it's just cleaner to do it that way?
No, there's no credit.
You know what I'm saying?
This is the cleanest way.
You know, if you spend X on something that was agreed to that the town would pay for, do you just say, give me a credit for it? I just, I don't know.
Yeah.
I, I don't wanna muddle the water.
Yeah, it gets.
Is it better the other way?
Yeah.
Okay. That's all.
Bill, did you have anything?
No.
Mike, just a question.
Yes.
Now, you're just a little confusing. The last two years, last two fiscal years, uh, V C Park contributed forty-five hundred dollars towards the insurance.
No, that was the budget.
That was the budget?
Yes.
What did they contribute?
So in fis, in fiscal year twenty-one, we were only able to contribute, um, it was, uh, it was about three thousand dollars.
And what did the town have to kick in?
They, they kicked in the remaining, uh, it was, it was probably about ten thousand dollars. The bill is about, the bill this year was about thirteen thousand. It, it, and I believe that in fiscal year twenty, we contributed somewhere in that same ballpark about, we, we contributed about forty-two hundred that year.
So, uh, in this budget of twenty-twenty-two, the town is gonna be footing the whole thirteen, the whole thirteen.
Right.
And the benefits package is for the employees.
One, not me.
One employee.
Right.
So. Dan?
So why wouldn't that just be simple math, a credit of sixty-five hundred? I mean, why wouldn't that be it? Otherwise, isn't that gonna be a variance, some sort of delta between the trade?
Well, again.
You know, and it's, isn't that making it messy? I don't wanna belabor the point, but I mean, isn't it just if you, thirteen grand divided by two and you pick up half, isn't it a sixty-five hundred dollar transfer? Just give me credit for sixty-five hundred? But I'd like a finite number on that, cause I mean, I'd hate for it to be the town picks up sixty-five hundred and the trade-off is like, oh, well, we come in under budget and it, it's, you know, we only had to pay two.
No, if you wanna do it that way, that's fine.
Bullshitical.
No, no, I'm just saying, it's fine with me because we don't know what the benefits are gonna cost the V C revolving fund, you know what I mean? Until we get the person hired, we don't know what their health coverage is gonna be and everything else, you know? So, I mean, it should be able to be worked out sometime in the next month.
Is this fair? And I guess, I don't know if there's a motion that will amend, a friendly amendment, but would it be fair to just say that, you know, if those costs were agreed upon to be shared equally, why don't we just agree to, that they will be equalized in the end?
Yeah, that, that's, that's fine.
Isn't that the gist of it, the essence of it? We agree to equalize those two expenses or those four?
I just think for right now, it's just simpler to do the letter and I'd ask to just move the question at this point, move the, the motion that it was seconded. I mean, I think we're just going round and round about nothing. This is a one-year thing, one-year thing.
You're worried about the budget. We're talking about hours. All we do is like split his over, over whether or not we have extra money to pay people and everything else, so here we have.
The town meeting voted the budget. They voted the amount for the health insurance, for the property and casualty insurance. We just have to not bill them because they're picking up a bigger share of the.
But in equal amount, it was agreed to be shared equally, it should stay static at that, it should be equalized in the end.
Okay, well then, we'll look at it after we see it. I mean, just, we're going around for no good reason right now.
I don't think so. I disagree with you.
I disagree with you. It's quarter ten.
So this.
I'm gonna know, Harry.
How much of this six thousand is going to go towards, uh, insurance for the, uh, on the buildings?
Well, this, in fiscal year twenty-two, we, we.
Mike, Mike, I'm sorry, simple question. You've got, uh, general insurance is thirteen thousand and you've got benefits of six thousand. Of that six thousand dollars for benefits, how much is going towards insurance? Uh, the liability, uh, uh, general insurance on the buildings, uh, fire insurance and, uh, for leakage or that stuff, how much?
I, I'm not sure.
None of it? That's.
Normally, if we didn't have them working, we'd pay six thousand dollars to the town.
So that, that six thousand is covering their, uh, retirement benefits, their, uh, medical benefits, so none of that is going on the general insurance?
Right, unless it's far lower.
Okay. Um, all right, there's a motion on the floor, send a, a letter out. Uh, any further discussion? None. All in favor? Opposed? Abstained? Three in favor, one no, one abstention. Now, the rest of this budget, I, I, I just have a couple of questions, maybe you can, maybe you can do it quickly. We're, we're looking to hire a community outreach coordinator.
Yeah.
Can you explain the difference between the director and the community outreach coordinator?
Oh, certainly. I'll let Vanessa answer that question.
And, and, and in that, it looks like the, uh, community outreach coordinator is looking for twenty-one thousand dollars. The director at seventeen thousand, but then you've got commissions at thirty-one. Uh, and also in that, uh, the difference, explain what this, what the thirty-one thousand commissions are.
Oh, okay. So I, I'll answer your budgetary question, then Vanessa can just say a quick word about the difference between the two. The, the budget thing, um, the way that Vanessa gets paid is she gets, um, seventeen thousand dollars without doing anything, you know? That's her salary, quote unquote. The rest of her compensation comes from fifty percent of all the events that she books, she gets fifty percent of the fees. Fifty percent of all the events that she books, she gets half of the fee. And she's not an employee of the town. She, she's a consultant, a ten ninety-nine.
How many hours a week does she work?
Well, that varies. It, it, I'm, yeah, because I'm a ten nine nine employee, it's not.
It's basic.
Yeah, it's about forty hours.
How do you, how do you, how do you get away with a ten ninety-nine employee? She's technically, you're working for the town of Groveland.
Yeah, but I get no benefits.
Well, not only that, you get no direction from the town. You're totally independent. It's like she has her own management company that does this work for us.
Be like a contractor.
Right.
So then it shouldn't be, it shouldn't be in there a salary?
Right, well.
For our purposes.
It should be, uh, director's fee is probably a better term for.
You wanna take that?
I, I, I think you hit the nail on the head. I mean, they, you know, if you're an independent contractor, you gotta follow the, uh, independent contractor statute in Massachusetts, very strict. So if you paid for a result, you know, like, go do this and it's, comes down to common law control, if you look at the, all of the tests on it, um... If someone tells you to show up at nine and you can leave at two or five, then they control you as common law employee potentially. If they provide the tools and the resources and the workstation and the computer, then you got yourself an issue. So it's not one element, but you know, it's kind of a totality of what's going on, whether or not it's within the same trade or business matters. You hire someone as a painter and you're a painter, uh, you got a, you got, you got a high mountain to climb arguing that person's an independent contractor. Uh, if I hire a painter and I have an accounting firm, well, I'm not in the painting business. A lot easier argument, easier lift. So, um, I think that ought to be looked at. Maybe that's something for a town council to look at.
Point of order, can-
No, 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 no. Don't cut me off, Kathy. No, no, no. No, no.
State your-
No, no. You're out of order. You're out of order, Kathy.
State your point of order.
That, I'm not even sure whether what he's going into is even on our agenda and we have-
Oh, this is a procedural issue.
People waiting here patiently for their time. I feel like we've given you two a lot of time and I feel like we've covered, we have covered the agenda item. VZ Park liquor license insurance and benefits. We've covered that.
We're, uh, we did. We're not, we're not on that. The-
Mr. Chair, may I?
I asked a question about, uh, director and, uh, community outreach coordinator.
Where's that on the agenda, please?
That's, uh, what's that?
I'd like to know, Mr. Chairman, where is that on our agenda for tonight?
We were handed the revolving budget and we just, I just asked the question. Dan, proceed.
What's relevant to the VC Park and the liquor license as to who holds it and whether or not they're an agent and what capacity, whether or not they're an employee or are they not? It's relevant to the question of who's the holder. Is it not?
I thought where the puppet was for that was the new employee that we mean.
Okay, and that new, a new employee. You just slipped there. So are they an employee? Are they an independent contractor? So yeah, sorry. Sorry, 10 of 10 here. All right. But are we off topic? Okay? We hit on something in the course of the discussion and that's within the course of the discussion. So despite what question Ellis S. Selectman wants, whenever she's in a hurry, it's, uh, things are dismissed and we're wasting time. I don't think it's a waste of time to ask the question whether or not a person is an employee or they not.
But just a follow-up question.
That's my point, Mr. Chair.
Mike, can I, uh, the, uh, the, uh, director on a 1099, does she pay her own workman's comp?
You have to pay everything that-
I mean, I-
Is there a, is there a signed, signed statement, a signed form that, uh, she's responsible for paying her own workman's compensation? We have that signed and-
Who else would pay for, I mean, you guys would-
We don't pay for it.
Right.
So in other words, she doesn't pay for it either. You don't pay, you don't have workman's compensation insurance with your 1099. Because if, when, when a person is hired on a 1099, it's either up to the company, the employer to pay the workman's comp or the employee. And if the town isn't paying for it, you must be paying for your own workman's comp if you get injured in the, at the facility up there.
Right. I, if I got injured and I couldn't work, that would be on me.
Oh, boy. I think that's a-
Mr. Chair.
Last, last statement.
I mean, I-
If you're independent, mandatory requirement, you have to get a worker's comp certificate, period.
I know that.
Period.
You guys are interested in making me a W-2 employee, that is something I'm very open to.
Another day.
I, otherwise, you know, I'm, I'm willing and open to any-
All right. Maybe that's for a discussion for another day. And forget the, forget the follow-up question about what the community outreach coordinator is supposed to be doing.
If anybody wants to come to VC too, we're very happy to give you guys a tour and show you guys how it works.
Well, we don't. We just had, just had some valid questions and I, I think they needed to be asked.
Absolutely. Um, I did have a quick question about the permit. The London permit is all set or is that, do you need anything else?
Yeah, we're going to take that up under, um, old business or, uh, the, the permit, uh, this is the, yeah, we'll, we'll vote for it. It needs to be, we'll vote it. Can't say that we'll vote, but we'll, we'll vote on it.
Sure thing. And thanks to Catherine for helping get that.
All right. Well, yeah, that'll, that'll have to come up. That'll have to come up in a little bit. Yeah. All right. Thank you guys for coming in.
Thank you, guys.
Chairman, may I make a motion that we, um, in order for this young woman to get home before her kids have to go to school tomorrow, bring up Groveland Day discussion? Because I'll be honest with you, the length of this agenda is so packed, i- i- it's insane. And we have an item on here that's going to require two hours of discussion that I think minimum. And I'll be honest with you, I need to feed my family and I need to be at work.
Okay.
And I need to be at least reasonably coherent when I get there.
All right. Anybody have any objections?
All my due respects.
Anybody have any objections for bringing up the Groveland Day discussion?
Please bring it up.
Discussion about reorganizing this board because this is absolutely beyond ridiculous.
All right. You're out of order.
Yeah, you were too.
All right, we'll take them, uh, anybody got any objection to bringing up the Groveland Day discussion?
No objection.
Nope. See, none. You're up. Thank you.
So as I mentioned before, my name is Lisa Chandler and I'm the newly-
Can you, can you speak up a, I'm sorry, could you speak up a little bit? No, that's not going to help.
Lisa Chandler, I'm the newly reappointed chairperson for, um, the Groveland Day Committee. And when I had originally asked to come before the board, nothing had reopened yet, but now everything is actually reopened. So we unfortunately had to cancel last year due to COVID. We had started the planning process. We had gotten, um, a fair amount through the, the process and then we kind of put everything on hold. Obviously, the pandemic occurred the way it did and everything got canceled. We canceled in late July. We hadn't paid any deposits for anything at that time, so we didn't lose out money or anything of that nature. But now we are looking to redo everything for this year in 2021. Uh, we are eyeing the weekend of September 24th and 25th. It would be nearly identical to the event we put on in 2019. So the evening of the 24th would be the 5K road race, um, with the small after-party located at the Pines, uh, with Groveland Day running from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM on the Saturday, the 25th. We would have bounce houses and food vendors and a craft fair and a dunk tank. And in 2019, former Selectman Wood, uh, sat in the dunk tank and kids had lots of fun dunking him in the water. So if anyone would like to volunteer themselves for this year, we'd be more than happy to have you.
He's built up here. We could, we could volunteer him.
I'll do it.
Sure. So, um, we had a very good turnout in 2019. People were very pleased, um, that the event had come back. It was the first year back and I think two or three years at that point, it had stopped in 2016 and we brought it back in 2019. Obviously, we had to take last year off. I think we could barely do anything this year and have a great turnout just because everyone is so at their breaking point with everything and just wanting to be back. But we were hoping that you guys would kind of give us your blessing and we could move forward. We've pushed it a little further back in September for this year. Just gives us a little bit more time to kind of get the ball rolling. At the time, we had been looking at dates. We thought August 1st was the reopening date and we tried to give ourselves a buffer. Obviously, that has changed. But I think having the extra bit of time now, um, even just starting to advertise now, we don't have a whole lot of time, um, to kind of get people on board. We would have to book, um, the vendors. We'll bring J&amp;J pony rides back. Uh, we've spoken with Curious Creatures. They're interested in coming back and doing a show, getting a face painter. There would be no evening event on the Saturday, um, so, so no like after-hours kind of adults-only type of event. So we'll keep it family-friendly like we did. Um, we're looking to try to bring maybe a petting zoo or something of that nature. People loved the animals we had last time. Uh, we were reaching out to Sweet Paws to see if they'd want to do like an adopt-a-thon, bring all the adoptable dogs down and people can adopt an animal. So, um, we're really excited to be able to bring it back this year. We actually don't anticipate needing to fundraise or, um, even really get sponsorships this year. We have plenty of money from the previous event. Obviously, we will ask if people would like to be sponsors and we will, um, operate that way, but we're not reliant on it. We can put on the event, uh, based on our costs from last time and still have money left over even if not a single soul showed up. So, um, we were just asking that if anyone had any problem with that date or the weekend, um, otherwise, we would love to just move forward and start getting the word out and booking things and, um, just being ready to go. So the 5K race would run, if we did it identical to the last event, it started at 6:00 PM. Most runners were done by 6:30, 6:45. And the event ran till about 8:30 when it just got too dark and a little mosquito-y out at the Pines to really be enjoyable anymore. Uh, we had a food truck and a beer tent and both of those went very well. We had about 80 runners. Um, we had planned to cap the event at 150 anyway and it just worked out that way. Uh, this year, we would look to do spectator-only tickets as well as the runner tickets because we didn't account for family members wanting to come and watch, uh, their family members running. So this would just give us the opportunity to have, um, a burger for their son that came to watch and stuff like that. So, um, it worked out really well last time. We had no complaints. We had six police officers on detail during the race and everything went very smoothly. Um, as far as I know, there were no complaints about Groveland Day itself. Everyone had a great time. So, um, we're just really looking forward to being able to bring it back again, especially given the past couple of years that everyone's had. But I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any. Otherwise, I will happily-
Anybody got any questions?
I don't have any questions. You do have a comment.
Go ahead.
I think, uh, Groveland Day is just great. I think two years ago when you had it, it was a phenomenal event.
Thank you.
And I really look forward to it, uh, again.
Yeah, thank you. Yes, good. We have a good team. So, um, we're pretty much, yeah, adding a couple of things, but trying to just recreate everything we did last time and just push forward and come back and just keep doing a little extra and a little extra as, as people enjoy it.
Well, thank you. I just wanted to say-
Working from the ward. Go ahead.
I was going to say, thank you for all the work you've done because I know that last, the first time you did it was a big hit. And then it was such a big disappointment to have to, you know, so I think this year you'll probably have twice as many people.
That's what I'm kind of looking forward to is not having to do a lot of work and just having people show up. So it'll be good.
No, that's wonderful. Thank you so much and thanks for waiting and-
Of course. Yeah, no, obviously you guys are very busy and there are lots of important things to discuss. So I understand. Used to be planning board, so.
Dan, do you have anything?
Yeah, just, uh, who's on the committee so we can recognize them and thank them. I mean, who's, who's involved?
So you actually just reappointed everyone. So Leah Bates is our secretary.
Yeah.
Um, Gil Crizziak is our treasurer. We have Jean O'Neil and Liz Zimmerman and, um, I believe Mike is still on there as well.
Mike, what?
Yes.
Okay. So, yep, so same crew as 2019. So we all came back because we had a lot of fun doing it. Um, and I think that, um, yeah, we all kind of just, we managed to get into really good roles and everyone has kind of their personal relationships and we're able to bring people on board. Um, and just kind of spread the word.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
You, you don't have a date yet?
September 24th and the 25th. So the road race will be the evening of the 24th at the Pines Friday night. Um, and then the Groveland Day itself will be Saturday, September 25th from about 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM. Weather, not even weather permitting, we, we-
Okay. Do, uh, do we want to take a vote, uh, to approve, uh, September 24th and, and 25th, uh, for the Groveland Day?
So moved.
So moved to second. Any further discussion? None. All in favor? Four in favor, one absent.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you for coming in. Sorry for the delay.
Oh, no problem.
Was it enjoyable?
Well, I work for the city of Beverly. I can tell you right now that trash is a problem everywhere and, um, so is this kind of thing. So enjoy the rest.
Very well put.
It's America.
Animal Rescue Plan Act of 2021, update on, on funding and potential projects. I didn't see any paperwork on that.
So I will say, if it pleases the board, Rebecca Oldham, Director of Economic Development, Planning and Conservation, due to time and some of your other time-sensitive issues that are on the agenda, if the board would like, you can table this item for the, this meeting and the next meeting, um, since I will be away and we can pick up this item on July 19th if that so pleases the board.
As long as we don't lose any money.
No, no loss of money.
What would you like to do?
I, I would like to be respectful of your time and the time of others who are waiting. So.
Yeah, accountant's still waiting.
I'll go at two in the morning.
I know you will.
I will. I'll burn out everybody. I will. No one's going to outwork me. I pride myself on it. So I'll go as long as anyone wants to go. It's your call.
I would prefer that we table this and we respect the fact that not all of us want to stay here all night. I mean, this is ridiculous.
Well, you think for yourself.
Motion to table.
Motion to table.
Second.
Second.
And, um, all in favor of table in, uh, one month. Thank you.
There you go.
That was easy. Uh, budgetary transfers of line items. Uh, we, our town accountant is here. You got your paperwork? Thank you.
Yeah, I just came in case you had any questions. Um, it's pretty standard.
It, uh, it, it looks, makes sense.
Yeah, we do these every year.
Do you, does this include the May bill for the, um, treasurer consultant?
So I don't have her May bill yet.
Okay, that's what I was thinking. It's not the May.
Put the maximum possible.
Oh, you already put it in. So it doesn't have the-
The transfer includes, um, a maximum amount for May and June.
So we might just make it here.
I think we're going to be fine.
Okay, good.
Well, I mean, we're not at a deficit. There are certain line items that, you know, we obviously need to cover, but in a whole, we're, we're doing just fine.
Good. So I'll make a motion to approve the line item transfers as presented here by the town accountant.
Motion and a second?
Yep.
Second.
Second. Any questions? Any discussion? Go ahead.
You say we're doing fine? I mean, what's our?
$500,000 surplus.
That's all we have for, for a caution?
To date.
To date? Is that, is that going to-
There's two more warrants.
Going to expand or contract?
It will go down, but we're okay.
We're not a surplus over what we budgeted.
Yes.
500, you think we have $500,000 available still in our budget?
I look at the current variance report and I take out the articles, there's 531,000 left right today.
In which line items?
We still have to pay everyone another payroll. We still have two more bill warrants to go through.
So what would account for there being over, that we over-budgeted by 500?
We haven't spent. I mean, I'm looking for some legal bills. Still, I got May, but I have nothing from February to April and I don't have June.
Because when I look through the variance, yeah.
And make sure we're all paid up to date on any, uh, of their consulting work.
Okay, so, yeah, because when I looked at the percentage of spending during, when you were giving us some of the reports, we got one in December and then another one later. It looked like we were tracking on most of the departments to spend the money, uh, with the exceptions of, of these ones that I knew were going to go deficit. So I'm just-
And some of these aren't really deficits. It's just department heads came and asked to move money from certain lines into another one of their line because they won't need it. Um, you know, they, a lot of education wasn't done this year because of COVID.
Yeah.
But they really need more supplies. So they would just ask to move it to a different line.
Correct. So when, when was our last variance report that we got from you?
Uh, last month. So it was the warrant before this, this one you just voted on.
Okay, so-
It would have been May.
Right. And Sarah said she was going to speak to you about getting us a revenue report. She said she would talk to you about that.
We are still working that. I just got April pushed through to me. I have to do my review. She's hoping to have May in the next week or two. I'm not sure the exact timeline, but she's supposed to have, she wants to have everything wrapped up by July 1.
Right. So I, she had said she would ask you to just pick a point in time and just get a something of a revenue report. Just something. Just so we have a point in time. But otherwise, this looks great. Let's do it.
Uh, Dan, you had something?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Um, so we're going to have a surplus of $500,000. What happens to the $500,000?
I have a surplus of $500,000.
What, uh?
I still have two warrants left.
Okay. And what's left on those two warrants? What's the?
I don't know yet.
I know. It's a crystal ball thing. What was budgeted for those two warrants?
I don't know. It's what expenses come in. I mean, no one can go over budget.
But let's say, so right now you have-
I have some money left where I-
Right now you have 500 in the kitty and you're waiting on a legal bill? Well, the legal bill's not going to be 500,000. So what's the, what are the, what are the expenditures?
The warrant is the entire town.
Yeah.
Bills. I don't know what departments are going to hand to me.
Gotcha.
So most departments, if you look at the spending, are, are almost there. You get a lot of 95%, 86%. There's, the few lines that I know of that I'm waiting on bills are, you know, legal, IT. Those are the ones off the top of my head.
Okay. Just trying to take a stab in the dock. Those, those won't add up to 500.
I'm not even willing- I'm not even willing to get...
Yeah, what I'm trying to get a feel for is a lot of what we do, if you've been paying, you know, watching the show, is we fight over whether or not we have money for something. That's what we argue over. Mostly, what we do is it's about who gets what and how much. And that's what I do and everyone else here. So whether or not we have additional funds for payroll, for instance, or added hours for somebody, we might have additional funds available. Is that possible? We might. So we have to wait and see how the dust settles and what the actual figures are, and that will all transpire in what, the next couple of weeks or a month?
Couple of weeks, but...
Okay. So there's one more question, and I will stop, because it's late.
You can't go back and pay someone. This money's not going to next year.
Where does it go if there's extra?
Falls to free cash.
Goes to free cash, which is, all right. So it might, it would be available, just not legally appropriated yet.
Until the fall, usually.
So when will we have that?
It won't be that exact all around.
Well, we could have special town meetings. There's all kinds of legal avenues to go get money, and that's what another part of my job is.
We'll reduce that. What's at the end of the variance report is not the free cash number.
So by next meeting or two meetings from now, we'll have finite figures, and those numbers will be posted?
I can give you a finite figure on the variance report, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
Nope.
Do we take a vote on approval of the budget transfers? Somebody make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the budget transfers.
Okay, in a second. Okay. Discussion, we're all set. All in favor? Unanimous. Four, one absent.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
This late time. Juneteenth holiday clarification. Who had that one?
There's no need for it. We just, we did a one-year thing. We had, there was an anticipation that Monday would be the holiday, and the state celebrated Friday. But we gave the employees Monday. That's over.
Well, reading, I think it was Friday was actually Bunker Hill Day around Boston. It was Suffolk County. Some of the places were given Friday off, some were given Monday off. Now a federal holiday, so it kind of a mute point.
Is that evacuation day or Bunker Hill Day?
It could have been either one.
All right. I don't know. I just, I just...
I don't live in Suffolk County.
I don't either.
Anything else on that?
I just have a point of order to...
Go ahead.
It is late, and it has been long-drawn-out conversations. And one of our members had to leave because he has to go to work in the morning. And I think that we should all be sensitive to everybody's schedules on this board. I think everybody commits to the board. So I feel that we should only vote on this agenda, items that are time-sensitive and essential, and potentially have another meeting. I think I already reached out to you about a meeting perhaps on Tuesday, because we have not yet done the Water and Sewer Union Contract. We could potentially do a couple of the small items here, such as the search committee, which I would like to have the full committee here for that.
Do you want to table that?
Yeah, until we have our full committee, if that's okay with everybody else.
All right. There's a motion. We'll make a motion on the tabling the search committee for the town administrator appointment.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Second. A motion to table. All in favor? Three opposed?
We didn't discuss.
There's no discussion on a motion to table.
On a table?
Yep, no discussion.
Three in favor. Tabled.
No.
One opposed. Conservation restrictions for 150 Center Street. I think everybody read that.
So we need to make a motion to approve it?
Yep. Is there a second?
Move it to approve it.
I'll second it.
I'm rhyming now.
Motion to, a motion to approve, and a second. Any further discussion?
Yes.
Yes.
What are the restrictions and why? And it was debt exclusion that paid for it, not CPA funds, so what are we doing restricting it? Why, you know, I've always thought that if CPA wanted it, they should have bought it and paid for it, or at the very least serviced the debt in part. Could have been bifurcated, could have lopped off the frontage on it for future use for municipal reasons. And the arriage or the turtle land and the wetlands could have been separated and paid for with CPA funds. It would have saved this town millions of dollars and $100,000 or more in finance charges. So why now, Mr. Dempsey?
Mr. Chair, this conservation restriction is an addition to an existing conservation restriction, because it's required by the state in order for us to put a community trail through a portion of endangered habitat area. It's not our choice necessarily to do it. The state is mandating it. It was approved by your board previously. It was approved by a vote of annual town meeting. So I don't really think it's, you know, a point of discussion so much as we just have to have you sign it tonight, because it's time-sensitive to development of the community trail.
Well said.
No further questions.
Okay. We need a motion, and do we get one? I don't think we got one. Motion?
Yeah, we did.
We made a motion in a second.
Any second for the conservation restriction, 150 Center Street. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, Mike. Pavilion used for the Boy Scouts. We could be able to do that quickly.
Make a motion to allow, based on the application.
That was tonight, Catherine?
What?
Boy Scouts, tonight?
Yeah, they already did it. So we've approved it. Well, make the motion to approve it.
Okay.
There we go.
I don't know if they held it or not, because it was raining.
Motion to, the motion and a second to approve the use of the Boy Scouts for the pavilion tonight. All in favor? Unanimous. Building inspector fee increases. Everybody read those over?
Did they increase again? Because we had this, sort of this once before.
Yeah, I thought we did too.
It'll be effective July 1st.
Okay, so that's just more correspondence than anything, because we already agreed to do it. That was a dollar over the building per thousand.
Oh, he asked me to have it put on for approval. Okay.
Yeah, because we already approved that.
I mean, move it again or not?
I didn't.
No, we don't have to do anything.
Okay.
I don't think we have to do anything with that.
We did, so...
Codify the general bylaw.
We don't need to vote. I think we voted at a town meeting. And we just need to sign it. We already, the annual town meeting already voted that.
I thought we already voted that.
We did. It was a special article at the annual town meeting to have this...
That's good.
...consulting. Need to sign it.
We have a request for a liquor license for Saturday, June 26, VZ Park. We did approve it, but the hours were incorrect, so we need to revote that. Hours are three to 10. Detail officer required. Mike, just a, we voted originally to waive the fee on that, if I remember. Okay. So we'll, we need a motion to approve the liquor license, VZ Park, Saturday, June 26. Somebody make a motion and waive the...
I'll make a motion for the permit for Saturday, June 26, from 3:00 p.m. to...
It's till 10 instead of 9, originally.
3:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m.
All right. Motion and a second.
Second.
All in favor? Further discussion? None. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Getting late.
It is. I agree.
Catherine.
Oh, thank you.
Do we off this on this?
Selectment's time. Anybody got anything?
The only thing I have is I believe we need to let Ellen know whether or not we'll be taking our stipend for the following year.
Okay, we will...
Oh, no, actually, I do have something else.
Well, you want to do that first?
What's that?
We'll let Ellen know.
We can do that anytime. Just shoot her an email.
All right. Actually, we could let Catherine know, and she can forward them to her.
Sure.
Yeah, because she's so busy doing everything as it is. The, yes.
I want my benefits.
There's an open meeting for the dog park, a new dog park that's going in at the Pines. It's on Zoom. All the information is on the website, the flyer with the link to click on. And so I encourage anybody that has any interest in the dog park to go on there and listen to the presentation and what's being proposed, and give their input at the end of the presentation.
All right. Dan, you got anything? No? Kathy?
No, I'm also.
I have not reasonably anticipated nothing. Correspondence. 611-21 KP Law Copy Letter for Michael Marsh Community Path. 68-2021 KP Law Letter to Dan McDonough Election Congratulations. 68-2021 KP Law Letter to Ed Watson Election Congratulations. 627-21 Letter from Xfinity Regarding Sport Networking. Anybody that had that package, got a rebate off their next bill. Conservation Report for Lower Center Street. Resignation of Sergeant Eric Ryan of the Police Department, effective June 30, 2021. Another one that'll be, did a great job and be sorely missed. Resignation of Kelsey Fitzgerald from the Library Assistant, effective 6/18/2021. And letter regarding an accident from Constance Broders, 5/18/2021. We need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn at 10:23 p.m.
Motion to adjourn in a second. Thank you, Jason, for the second. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Thank you for everybody sticking it out.